And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee's Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee's Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of October 16th. City council meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers and city hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Looking for a career change or just starting out in the workforce? Attend the City of Lee Summit Career Fair and Expo on October 18th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Gambler Community Center. The city offers meaningful work that positively impacts the safety and quality of life of residents. Open positions include application analysts, engineers, airport attendants, utility workers, firefighters, court clerks, and police officers. At the fair, attendees can visit with hiring departments about job opportunities, complete applications, and interview onsite for select positions. Explore career opportunities at lspeople.net. Join District 3 Councilmembers Phyllis Edson and Mayor Pro Tem Bethel Lopez for a town hall on October 19th at the training facility at the Lee Summit Police Department. Receive an update on major projects and visit with department representatives. This town hall is a come and go event. Unable to attend? The meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. And the city, in partnership with the Missouri Department of Transportation, want your feedback. The online public hearing for the Missouri 291 North Interchange at US 50 Highway Improvement Project is open until October 17th. View project plans and exhibits, submit comments, and ask questions. The project is estimated to begin in late summer or early fall of 2024. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises. And we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene. Licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words: mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982, then route.
Officers, then route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown. And then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee's Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of crisis intervention team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health. And I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, in getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person. And they responded immediately. And we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
It's Mayor Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions about the plan, so I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee's Summit. I stay home with my children. My husband works 48-hour shifts at the fire department. They have a football field set up. Our two-car garage is gonna, we're gonna bring the driveway bath through here, and it's gonna go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're gonna be eating the eggs, and I would like to use them for meat." So don't treat them as your pets. Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets, and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown, and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln, and Amira, and Sophia, and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community. We like to walk to the farmer's market. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off, and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee's Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed because she was my first, and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt, and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone, she gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school. A lot of the farmers there, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee's Summit in general. I love that it still has a small-town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee's Summit Elementary, and a lot of their teachers live downtown. So when we're out walking, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five, and then we moved to the United States, and I've lived in Lee's Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom. And I feel like I was essentially raised by my community. And being on council, it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I state your name.
I'm Mia Prior.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualification.
On the 5th of April, 2022. The election process was fun. I got to go door-to-door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door, and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mia Prior. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I love being a councilor for District 1. I know everyone says this, but District 1 is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District 1. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee's Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap. We're the voice of our constituents, and we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. It's always been important to me to be active in the community, and I married a firefighter that works for Lee's Summit Fire. Don't say hi to daddy. And so having first responders supported in the community has always been important to me. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee's Summit, the type of businesses we get here, and the type of activities there are to do. So our first presentation tonight is gonna be about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video.
The farmer's market has always been such an important part of my life. So to see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from city hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people. I don't think you have gas. You wanna hold it? Don't grab it. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. The chickens were out. I thought, we thought that would be a good place for the dogs. I'm not a politician. I'm just an average person in Lee's Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Just a mom that cares.
Welcome, everyone. Can you hear me? Great. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, bless the participants in tonight's meeting. May we have fruitful discussions and come away with some good answers. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session, Joint Session is the first part, actually both parts, with the Planning Commission. This is Regular Session number 52, and I hereby call it to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember DeMoro.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is approval of an agenda. We don't have our tablets, so I would like...
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shields.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges.
Aye.
Councilmember Felker.
Aye.
Councilmember Edson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor.
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell.
Aye.
Councilmember DeMoro.
Aye.
Mayor Baird.
Aye. Very good, thank you. Next is the Council Roundtable. Items of general interest, and I would... Do we need to do a Planning Commission? Yes, we do need to do a roll call? Yes, we need to do a Planning Commission roll call. Commissioner Chair Funk?
Do the roll call? Donna can do it.
I can do that. Commissioner Trafton.
Here.
Commissioner Arth.
Here.
Commissioner Kitchens.
Here.
Commissioner Benbrook. Commissioner Jana Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Lovless.
Here.
Commissioner Tuzinski.
Here.
Chair Funk.
Here.
Now, we'll do a Council and Commissioner Roundtable. Any items of general interest in your district or community? Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that the District III Roundtable is this Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:00 at the police training facility at Tudor and Douglas.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. For anyone planning their Halloween calendar out like I am, Saturday, October 28th is the Booze, Barks, and Badges Halloween Parade. It's kind of like a parade, but really you kind of go trick-or-treating at everyone, every business's door. It's a lot of fun for the kids, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. Missioners, anything? Okay, public comments. Ms. Lake, do we have any public comments?
We haven't received any, and there's nobody online for a public comment.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation, so I'm going to... A very apt one for the evening. It's the Community Planning Month, so I'm going to step out here. If I could have some... Mr. Johnson, you want to come down? And anybody else that you'd like to invite? Sorry, you guys have to turn around behind. Oh, yeah, they're trying to hide. Come on down, please. Hi, thank you all for being here. I'm going to read this, and then I'll ask you to say a few words and tell us what you do. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, whereas community planning and plans help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellently recognize the participation and dedication of the members of Planning Commissions and other citizens who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of our community. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Community Planning Month. All right, thank you. Would you like to start us off with a few words?
Sure, I'd like to start off by handing the mic over to our Deputy Director, Amy Nassif. She's over this planning group, and her background is in planning, so I'd like her to say a few words. My name's Joshua Johnson, and I'm the Director of Development Services. Here's our Deputy Director, Amy Nassif.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, Council and Planning Commission. Every year, American Planning Association selects October to recognize the profession of planning, bring awareness to it, and talk about how planners can really affect change and make a great impact on making communities great through development, growth, and redevelopment. We have an awesome team and a lot of new faces, and several of us also with national accreditation in the American Planning Association profession. And also want to thank our partners and especially the Planning Commission that we get to work with so often, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Ian Treffron.
Dan Fernandez, Project Manager.
Grant White, Project Manager.
Hector Soto, I also am a planner.
Dawn Bell, Planning Manager.
Got Ready, Project Manager.
Likewise, I'm born, Project Manager.
Shannon McGuire, Planner.
You've got quite the department. You must be really busy these days.
Yeah. Getting ready for the PRI land that's about to come, you know, online, as we've all seen. SLR, yes, that's correct.
We are very appreciative. We couldn't be here without you, and you do all the work. You're the experts. Thank you for advising us and helping us get through each and every application that comes through. So, thank you all for all that you do for us. So, would you all please take a picture with me? Squeeze in. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, very good. That was excellent. We're going to go ahead now, and the next thing on the agenda is Presentations. And we were going to talk tonight about the public hearing process, questions related to preliminary development plans and zoning. Staff's also going to just talk about key issues made by Planning Commission when they approved the IGNITE Comprehensive Plan, which this thing is huge. You guys approved this, and I'm sorry. But you allowed us to participate and work with you through this process. How long did it take? About nine months to get through that? It was a chore. It was a chore. It was a lot of work, though. Of course, we had great staff helping us. And so, at this point, though, before we kick this off, I want to say on behalf of the City Council that we appreciate all that you're doing for us at the Planning Commission. You're doing the heavy lifting. It's critical for us. We couldn't... I mean, you've seen some of the late-night meetings that we have. We could not do this without you. The detail, the attention to detail that you all have, the work, the way you're working with our staff, I think is fantastic. The way that, you know, we're trying to support the decisions you make, you know, and I think that it's easy for us to go back through and watch the videos of the Planning Commission and not just learn a lot about, you know, the development, but see that you guys are asking all the right questions, getting into the details, making sure there's enough parking. Good job. I love that when you do that, and things of that nature. So, and Chairperson, Planning Commissioner Donnie Funk, you've done a fantastic job. Would you please tell them how hard it is to be in this spot sometimes? Is it not easy, or what?
It's tough. I mean, we want to make the right decisions, but we also, you know, I think our whole team is pro-development. But we want a nice product here in our community and making sure that the outcome is what we want to see in the end. And sometimes there's some difficult decisions that have to be made, and when they get tough, we pass them on to you guys.
But I don't think we've had to send anything back to Planning Commission in years. So, that tells me that you're really getting into the details. You're not sending us half-done or applications that haven't been vetted. Important. So, again, we appreciate that. I would say that I do know it's a challenge because we are in your seat, and we do know the challenges of trying to make a decision based on the quality of the development. And sometimes the applicants make it a challenge. And all we can say is we feel your pain, and we do our best to, you know, just make the decision based on, you know, what's in front of you and what staff is putting in front of you. So, we do struggle with that, you know, at times as well. I think, you know, we know how hard it is, and we do appreciate that you work through those types of things. So, would you like to add anything to that?
No, we appreciate the support that we get from staff and the council on our decisions. And I would look to see if any of the commissioners have anything to add. And I mean, I don't think... I mean, I think it's just the support we get from staff really works out for us and the support we get from you and your team.
Yep, very good.
Chairperson.
Yes, sir.
I will say we have great leadership. Chairperson Funk does a great job. I think there's not a single commissioner on here who would disagree or say that he hasn't been there for each one of us when we needed him. So, to call him out.
And, yeah, and he works fantastic. He meets with me, and we try to make sure that we're on the same page. Same time, if there's anything we want to talk about today, as things are coming up, we're going to have staff come up and just kind of talk through some different things. And if you have questions, just raise your hand, and I'll call upon you, or Chairperson Funk will, and we will have a good discussion. So, I think we're going to start off, unless you have anything more... I think we'll start off with Mr. Josh Johnson, who you just saw. Create a little discussion.
Hi, Josh Johnson, Director of Development Services. This will kind of be a tag-team presentation with Mr. Bushak, our attorney. Can everybody see the screen here? So, the simplistic diagram I sent out with your packet tonight, and the colors don't mean anything, I assure you. Wanted to talk about kind of roles in the development process, and I'll expand on each of these a little bit as we go through. And then Mr. Bushak is going to talk through a lot of different configurations of the applicant and how that may or may not impact our decisions as we go through the development process. So, just right off the bat, we don't have a project without an applicant. You know, we review private development here, and, you know, without that, there's nothing. And right off the bat, when an applicant comes in, staff starts providing feedback, even at the napkin sketch phase. That's a term that's overused, but it does apply in this case. We have a pre-application conference with the applicant, and that's really to bring up red flags. We're always acting as a filter before things get to the Planning Commission and City Council. And so, that starts right at the beginning. Oftentimes, you know, somebody's in a due diligence phase of acquiring a property, and we may say, you know, just so you know, that property doesn't have sewer, and it's like a half-mile away, and that's going to be a lot of money for you to bring it there, just things like that. And we try to really help people out by letting them know of issues like that. As I mentioned before, staff acts as that filter. We go through at least one or two review cycles with the applicant where we're trying to get the project more ready for a public hearing. Also, a key part of the development process is the public. We require all of our items, our PDPs, our rezones, to have a neighborhood meeting. And that's the first chance for the public to get involved with a project. They can provide valuable feedback to the applicant. And also, as they start becoming aware of a project, they can start talking to staff about what they're seeing. Many members of the public, when we talk to them about a project, they just want to know what it is exactly and what's going on with it. And sometimes, when they hear, they go, "Okay, that sounds good." And, you know, that's kind of the end of their involvement in the project. And then, other times, they want to know how they can testify and participate in the process as it moves through, and staff helps them with that as well.
I was there. You're talking about people that are not the applicant, but other people?
Yeah, yeah, folks within noticing range.
So, I just wanted to chime in there. I think that that's... I don't... I know it's teamwork that helps that happen, but that's where things have gotten a lot better for council. I feel like people are showing up at the Planning Commission. They are voicing their concerns now ahead of time and not just waiting until it gets to council, and then, all of a sudden, we're being asked questions that didn't get vetted at the public during your Planning Commission public hearing. So, I do appreciate that staff is working with citizens and telling them, "You need to show up at the Planning Commission." It helps us because it helps us plan in case we get the same questions. But also, usually, it's just more communication, so...
Yeah. And after that cycle goes through and staff gets something, I'll say, "Show ready," if you will. It goes to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission is a recommending body on all those applications. There are a select group of things that stop at Planning Commission, but for the most part, they're a recommending body. And they're really, as Mayor Baird said, they're trying to prepare the most complete package of testimony and vetting, if you will, so that when it gets to City Council, all the issues have been discussed. Finally, after that, there's another public hearing at City Council. State statute really requires that we have one public hearing, but the City of Lee Summit does two. Two public hearings, I mean, not TOO. And City Council is the final decision-maker on these land use applications. And again, they look back at everything that's happened so far, and they also have another opportunity for the public to come up and testify. And as I mentioned before, they're the final decision-maker on that. And those are the five, I think, biggest roles I could come up with in the public hearing process. And like I said, the colors don't mean anything. I didn't draw it into a star either. So, with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Bushak. He's going to talk more about the roles of an applicant and different configurations of that applicant role.
Good evening. David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. Could I have the back room bring up the other chart? And I have paper copies for you. So, the focus of my discussion tonight is focusing on making zoning decisions, making zoning and land use decisions versus making an applicant decision. I've discussed this issue extensively with our Development Services staff, so this isn't just your attorney talking to you. This is speaking on behalf of our entire staff team on this issue. But my primary directive, as I see it, as your planning and zoning attorney, is to make sure you're making fully informed, legally defensible decisions. Can the back room put up the other chart? It says zoning decisions and parties at the top. It's not on there, that's why. Yeah, it's not on the computer here. They have to do it in the back room. There you go. And if you could go to full screen... There you go. Okay, so that's the chart that we'll be talking about. So, as I was saying, my task is to make sure you're making fully informed, legally defensible decisions, with an emphasis on legally defensible. And occasionally, we hear questions from both at the City Council and Planning Commission level that kind of test the outer bounds of zoning powers versus valid concerns, but really related to other areas of the law that aren't necessarily in the zoning context. So, I thought the best lead-in for this would be to talk about this chart and first put this in the context of who the applicant is, and then some of the permutations that may spill out of this for development purposes to then get to the issue that I want to talk with you about. So, I prepared this chart for this discussion tonight. If you think about this in three tiers, I suppose, that the top tier is the applicant, which I'll get to in a minute. Then, the second tier is the remainder of these green boxes. And then, the third tier is some other parties that I'll get to as I walk through this discussion. So, the first thing to think about, and this is something that you probably don't think about much when the application's in front of you, but who is the actual applicant that's answering your questions? So, a typical scenario, for example, is there's a piece of property. It's owned by the landowner. The landowner is not going to be the developer. There's, in my lingo here, company number one. That's the company that's going to be the developer. So, that's the company that's actually proposing to develop the property. They have an option contract with the landowner to purchase the property if the zoning is approved and if other things happen that allow the company to move forward. And then, the other boxes that we have here, engineer, other consultants, and the lender, which will also become important in the discussions. The box that's labeled consultant, that could be the architect, could be the attorney for the developer or the landowner, or both. Sometimes, for some of the larger projects, we see that the developer might hire a spokesperson or a PR-type company. And that's the party that's here at the podium talking to you. So, the first thing to think about is, who is the actual applicant? And the reason that's important is because both at the Planning Commission and City Council, you're addressing your questions to the applicant. You're talking to the person that's standing here at the podium answering your questions. Now, there's a number of scenarios that could play out in terms of the development process. A lot of what-ifs, a lot of maybe scenarios. So, for example, starting with my scenario where company one is the developer. They have an option contract to purchase the property from the landowner. And company one is essentially the company that's answering your questions when you ask them questions about different aspects of the project. But here are some scenarios. Company number one might not buy the property. Maybe company one goes bankrupt before they can purchase the property, so somebody else ends up developing it. Maybe company number one can't secure their financing, which is usually a contingency at the time they're making their presentation to you. Usually, the lending is not finalized. I think that's a very rare circumstance. Maybe company number one merges with company number two, and so, the property that actually develops is company number three. Maybe the company number one was actually, to borrow a real estate term, a straw man, and they were actually presenting the project to you with the intention of company number two, or maybe company number three actually being the developer, but you don't know that when the application is made and the people standing here are answering your questions. Maybe company number one is threatened with litigation. They bail out on the project, and company number two moves in and develops the property. Maybe company one is the master developer, and that these other companies, company two or company three, they're the companies that are going to develop the lot, various lots in the project, but they're not the ones answering your questions. Maybe company number one builds the project and then sells it within a year or two. Maybe company number one has a number of tenants that are lined up, but those tenants change by the time the project's actually constructed. All of these scenarios that I described to you, I've worked on projects where all of these have played out. They're not necessarily only Summit. Some of them are with some of my previous city clients and previous projects, but I could give you an example of every scenario I just described. So, the point is, the commonality between all of those scenarios is this, and this is where I want to lead into the discussion point. The person who's standing here at the podium answering your questions may not be the party that develops the property. Or it may be the party that develops the property, but soon after it develops, there's another company that is operating the project. So, why is this important to our discussion, and why is this important for you to consider? The reason is, the answers that you hear to many of the questions that you pose to them could change in all of these scenarios. So, an example of questions that I think you've all heard in the past that you ask of applicants, "What rent will you charge?" "What's the market rent for your apartment units?" "Will you have any restrictive covenants to deal with issue..." fill in the blank. "How long will you own the property?" "Are you a build-and-hold company, or is there a possibility you'll sell soon after the zoning's approved or after you develop the project?" "How long have you owned other projects in other cities?" "Have you ever sold any of your other projects?" "For commercial operations, what are your hours of operation?" And then, you can get into some more of the minute details, such as what sort of countertops will you have in the apartments? And other details, there's a long list of questions that I've developed, but I think you get the idea. There's a number of questions that's somewhat common to ask of applicants, and the point is, the party that's answering those questions may completely change, and I think you need to keep that in mind. So, for guidance, before you're asking your questions, and this gets to the point of guidance that I have for you, ask yourself a couple of questions or think about these points. Is this a land use and a zoning question that I'm asking, or is it an applicant question that I'm asking? Is the answer to this question I'm about to ask, could it change? Could it change in one of those scenarios? Could it change if this company changes their mind? Could it change if another company steps in and builds the project? Could it change if another company steps in and owns the project right after the project is built? A lot of the answers to those questions that I walk through, there's no recourse for the city. If they change the rent as compared to what they told you here at the podium, if they change the hours of operation or any of those operational aspects of the project, the city has no recourse. And I think you get the point, that the questions you're asking of the applicant, if it's not related to the land use decision that you're making and the zoning decision that you're making, it's probably not a very relevant question. making, it's probably not a very relevant question. So, another way to think of this, in terms of the meeting packet that you receive and the documents that you're reviewing, is the question that you're about to ask applicable through the city zoning regulations and the U D O? Is it on the face of the P D P, or is it on the face of the elevations? And if one of the questions you're asking relates to one of those three things, perfectly valid question. It's something you can see on the P D P, and you're asking questions about it. It's something that you can see on the elevations, and you're asking questions about it. Or it's something that is applicable to this project and the land use that develops from the U D O regulations, from our zoning regulations. And if it's outside that orbit of concerns, if it's not on the P D P, if it's not on the elevations, if it's not part of our zoning regulations, then it's probably not relevant because of all the scenarios that I just described to you. Answers to a lot of those questions could and probably do change if another company develops the project.
Okay. So, it's actually pretty tough, what you're saying, because we care about the Summit, and we want to make sure we're making a good decision on all of these things. So, it's good for us to hear as counsel, because I'm sure Planning Commission probably hears this stuff a lot more than we do, at the same time. What's the best way for us to handle it, like Chairperson Funk and I, when we go down that route? You know, we understand, I mean, or how do you communicate that to us when we're up on the dais? Because I've allowed those kind of questions before many times.
Right, right.
I mean, it just, it just happens, and it sounds natural when someone asks a question that you're concerned about on the application. So what's your guidance to us, and as to the way we handle that?
Yep. So I've actually given a lot of thought to that very question, and I've talked with our city attorney a bit about this. I think the best answer that I have for you is, listen to what I'm saying tonight, and keep these points in mind. It's a bad situation, so consider this sort of scenario. You have, let's say, a contentious application in front of you, and Planning Commission, City Council, you naturally want to ask a lot of probing questions, and you start getting into these sort of questions in the public hearing. And let's say it's one of those really close scenarios where maybe litigation could result from this if the decision is made in a certain way. And we know what projects those might be versus other projects that are more run-of-the-mill and vanilla. It would be bad for either the city attorney or myself to start telling you during the public hearing, you're asking questions that are improper. That would create a great record for somebody that's going to sue the city. So that's what, that's one of the things that we want to try to avoid, and that's part of the answer to your question. So I think the best answer that I have is, listen to the advice tonight, keep these points in mind, and if you think, you as either of the chairs in particular of the two bodies, if you think we're approaching some trouble points in a public hearing, feel free to take a five-minute recess and talk with your attorney, either city attorney or myself, in the case of the Planning Commission.
I think that's where I probably make the mistake. I probably typically have said, you know, "Mr. Head, should we be talking about this?" And you're saying not to do that, but maybe to take a recess and then regroup as a council or as a commission.
Yeah, so I know that's not common. In other settings, like in a courtroom setting, it's common to take a recess so parties can talk about various issues. I know it's not common in the public hearing setting here, because you're making everybody in the room wait, and it's just not something that's traditionally been done here. But in those situations where we have the more contentious applications, let's say, and you're aware of these issues, or you think that we're approaching a danger point in some situations, I would say feel free to take a short recess and let's talk about it for a moment.
I could do that. What do you think?
I agree. I mean, taking a recess and having the discussion is great, but David, I do have a question in regards to the criterias for considering rezoning, preliminary development, and conceptual plan applications. We have 18 criterias.
Yes.
That we work off of. So if an applicant comes before us and presents, they're asking for a rezoning, and they have a P D P, and let's just say they're going to build a convenience store, the Planning Commission is looking at these 18 criterias, and that's where we're basing our questions for the applicant. Is that correct? That's what we want to be basing it off of.
Yes, that's right. So that's something that I came prepared to talk about also. I've got the list of 18 criteria here, and there's one that does touch on this area and comes close. And it's number 13, the ability of the applicant to satisfy any requirements applicable to the specific use imposed pursuant to this chapter, which is the entire U D O. And so back to the main point that I was making, if you're asking questions of this applicant where the answer might change if another company ends up developing or owning or operating this property, probably not something that you want to be asking about. But if you're asking about that specific factor, and you're tying your questions and your areas of concern to this company's ability to meet the requirements of the U D O, just like that number 13 says, that's a fair question. So the point is, tie it, like I said, tie it to either our zoning regulations, the P D P, or the elevations for the project.
So if the applicant, the scenario, we have a grocery store, the applicant is there, and I kind of make a twofold question here, so while the commissioners are with me. Say there's a building material that maybe they're asking for a modification on, and it falls under criteria number six, to which the proposed use would negatively affect the aesthetics of the property or neighboring property. If we don't feel that material is going to hold up our last, and this applicant can't answer that question, as we ran into in the past, where do we go from there?
I think that's, based on the way you phrase that, that's a valid area of concern, relating to that number six criteria.
We are still focusing on these 18 criterias of what we're going to make our zoning decisions, preliminary development decisions on.
Yes.
But I think I was, I want to make sure, and I want the commissioners to speak up to when you say, company one may not be the final person. I don't know if that really matters to us in the aspect of, we're looking at the project as a whole. They're presenting us, they're supplying us with an application that's eventually going to go on to the City Council. We want to make sure they're meeting these 18 criterias before it goes any further, correct? It doesn't matter who's going to own it six months from now, an hour from now, it's the applicant that's before us.
Yes, that's correct, and I think that's probably the proper framework to be thinking about the issues.
Correct. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Prior.
Thank you. Okay, so, this is confusing to me. So you're saying that when an applicant comes before us, we need to be careful what we're asking, because that may not be the, that may not be the person actually developing it, right?
Yes.
So, in that case, if they're not, they probably know they're not going to be the ones developing it, correct?
I would say, in most cases, they probably don't know, see if I can answer this right. When they're standing here answering your questions, they're presuming, with a few exceptions, that they are going to be developing the property. There's a lot of what-ifs, and like I said, there's a lot of financing issues. There's a number of things that could derail the project before that company actually purchases the land and develops the property, and there's, it's probably more common than not that the company that is presenting to you is going to be the developer of the property. But like I said, I rattled off a dozen examples of where that's not the case. So it's, it happens from time to time.
Okay, so, but a lot of the questions that you listed, is this on? Because I don't feel like...
You have to get really close.
Okay.
Notice when I was sitting over there.
But a lot of the questions that you listed are questions that we get from people asking us, "Okay, I see there's going to be a new apartment complex near my neighborhood," and they want this, they want answers to specific questions, but we can't, we're not supposed to ask those questions, or?
So this gets into one of the points that I didn't really elaborate on to begin with. There's a number of very valid, what I would call municipal public purpose concerns that you have as the City Council, but when you have a zoning application in front of you, your line of questioning and your decision needs to be based on your zoning authority as opposed to other issues. So for example, if the primary concern is this company and their upkeep of property in other cities, and I've seen lots of examples where they haven't kept up their property very well, that's a property maintenance code issue, which is a very valid concern for the city, but that's a different body of law than the zoning law that you're making your decision based on when the zoning application's in front of you.
But doesn't it all play together? Because if you change the zoning, so if it's zoned industrial, if it's zoned agriculture, you change it to PMICs, then that zoning's locked in, and then you approve. I mean, doesn't it all kind of, so I understand not to ask, obviously, if they're in front of you asking zoning questions, you don't ask questions about the development they're getting ready to do. Is that what you're meaning?
Well, so my point was, be mindful of the questions that you ask where the answer could change based on this company's change in business practices, or if another party develops the property. What rent will you charge? What will you put in your private covenants? Things of those nature.
But those are questions that people, that if there's an apartment getting developed next to them, those are questions that I'm getting via email, and I feel like it's my duty to ask those questions so people know what's getting developed next to them. They don't want to be like, "Oh, okay, so it could be a super junky apartment, it could be a nice apartment." Like, I feel like that's my duty to address questions that I'm getting. I don't know.
Yep, and I definitely appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate that concern. But like I said, my main task is to make sure that you're making valid legally defensible zoning decisions. And if you were to turn down, in that example, a zoning application for an apartment complex based on factors that are outside your zoning powers, that's where we get into trouble. So, chances are, in a situation like you're thinking, there's going to be very valid factors that are related to your zoning powers that you say no to that project for. And that's where I want to steer your concerns, as opposed to those factors that are outside the zoning orbit that we're concerned about.
And what are valid reasons to say no?
Any of the things on the list of 18 criteria. And we can certainly go over those, and we can, you know, as needed, but I want to make sure you're making...
Different people have different questions. I know Commissioner Arth has been waiting, and then somebody over here, I think. Go ahead, Commissioner Arth.
I'm with Councilmember Prior. I find it a little confusing. So, if we, if we go through the process and council makes strictly zoning, zoning decision, or decision based on the zoning, what is, what is there if the project isn't? It almost sounds like the project could be completely different than what was approved in the zoning, than the P D P that was presented with the zoning. I guess it's really hard to separate, I think it's hard to separate that out, and I'm just trying to understand what, in the process, keeps the applicant accountable, I guess?
Right. So in your statement of completely different, it can't be completely different than what the zoning district allows. It can't be completely different than what's on the P D P, and it can't be different than the elevations, and those are the areas of concern. So if another company comes in and matches the P D P and the elevations, and it meets all the zoning regulations, the project can move forward. And if it's not within those areas of concern, those are the questions that I think we should try to avoid. So I can't, like, in your phrase, what if it's completely different? It can't be completely different. They would, and depending on what those differences are, they probably would have to come back through a new P D P process, a new public hearing, if it's so different that it doesn't match the P D P. And that's our main concern.
Who over here had a question? Yes, Commissioner Lovell.
I was going to kind of address your question and maybe work around what he said, and David can correct me anytime I'm wrong or off-base, but a different way that you might be able to ask him those questions about, and it's not directly, you know, saying, "What's your rent rate?", but the quality of materials that you have, the quality construction that you have on those different projects, you know that if it's a market-rate project, there's not going to be the ability of somebody to put in, you know, top-rate amenities and top-rate materials on a project like that, and then come in and not have top-of-the-market rent rates, right? So, because those different things, the material types, the architecture, those different things all fall into some of the different questions that we can ask as part of the 18 criteria, those would be things in my mind, like, when I look at an application that I don't think has some of the things that I want to see from a design standpoint, that I'll target in on and try to ask questions about. And then, I think, and this is where David can tell me if I'm wrong, but that criteria 13 that talks about the ability, the extent of the applicant to be able to perform on the project, that's where I look at it and say, that's where, you know, the history of the developer matters, right? What they've done in the past in the community. And so you know if they, you know, produced what they said they would produce before in the past, we obviously can tie it to what the P D P says. That's why it's important to ask questions about what's on the paper that's in front of you, right? The specific design elements and things like that. Then you can feel more comfortable about the application that you're approving.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement.
Commissioner Trafton.
Thank you. I just want to expand on what you're saying, Councilmember Prior. I mean, that is the question that sometimes we struggle with, because if we push a project forward, ultimately, you guys are going to approve it or not. But if we change it from Ag to PMICs, we're stuck with PMICs. And, you know, that project may not move forward, and a lot of them don't. And so then we're like, well, do we want to have this PMICs out there from Ag? And, you know, to David's point, like, somebody else can come behind and re-applicant that project and make it happen. But, I mean, those are kind of real-world struggles that we try to, like, balance, because we have people coming to us saying the same thing they're saying to you, too. So, you know, I just appreciate you raising that point, and it's like a fine balance of staying within where we're supposed to stay in, and also making sure we get quality product and development in the city that we want to see, right? So...
Yes. Commissioner Kitchens, and then Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Mr. Bushak. So, we've been over the 18 requirements. I believe there's one in there about economic capability within the city as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I understand the applicant and the developer, everything might actually change, but they are locked in to a lot of the things that we talk about in the P D P, the elevations, et cetera, as you commented. And we're locked into our zoning decision that goes through City Council as well. So my question is, what tools exist for us to make sure that we can lock them into a few more things? One thing that comes to my mind is the S U P. And being able, we've talked about maintenance a little bit here and city codes, but the S U P travels with the application even if another developer comes in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we have recourse against that mid-S U P. We don't have to wait 20 years and things of that nature. That recently came up on an application as well, correct?
Yes.
So what other tools exist, S U P included, for us to be able to maybe make the citizens of least summit's desires a little bit more applicable regardless of the developer and to which hands the switches?
Well, so, let me clarify one point. Everything that I discussed was in the context of rezoning, and typically, almost always, a preliminary development plan that's a companion to the rezoning, not a special use permit. If there is also a special use permit, or if there's only a special use permit, then there is a higher degree of scrutiny. I think you're correct on that point.
Thank you. And a little bit of a follow-up on that. The special use permit, how many, where does that tool lie? In other words, which bodies get to develop that out, or is that strictly on a staff recommendation?
So, I'll go ahead and answer this, but I'm not, you can tell me if I hit the mark or not. Chapter 89 is what's the city's zoning-enabling powers. So the city has general powers from the state to pass zoning laws, and there's not a lot of guidance on certain points. Special use permits are a tool that's specifically allowed under the zoning-enabling statutes, but there's not a lot of guidance beyond that. And so the answer is, ultimately, it's up to the City Council through its adoption of the U D O, or changes to the U D O, to fashion what those regulations look like. And the Planning Commission, you're the body that gives the recommendation to the City Council on those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bushak. So it's the two parties sitting at this table right now that basically develop the S U P with special requirements, we'll say, on any developer, or any contractor, anyone who comes in on this application, to be able to push those forward regardless of who has it?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So at this table, we have everyone here that can actually make those decisions. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bushak.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
I guess first I just want to ask for some clarification on that last point from Commissioner Kitchens. So, a special use permit, that can't just be attached to any project. Isn't there like a specific list of uses that require a special use permit? It's not like we can just throw them wherever we feel like?
Correct.
Okay. No, I think this is really informative, and maybe it'd be good after this meeting to send around that list of the 18 criteria for us all to familiarize ourselves with again. So I think what we don't want to run into is, we ask a bunch of really good questions, and we also have peppered in there somewhere, "Are you going to buy this and hold, or are you going to put in this kind of carpeting or whatever, and have them come back and sue us later and say, 'You denied my application improperly', right?
That's exactly my concern. Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner John Ford.
Thanks. Thank you, I'm here. So, I'm still a little confused, but I think, I'm going to make an assumption, and I'm going to have you tell me if my assumption is correct. Okay. So, when we're looking at an application, we're essentially looking at it as if it's a shell. So anything from the outside is all that we're really concerned about in relation to the 18... to the 18 criteria?
That's actually, that's something that I jotted down, but I didn't say. Try to avoid going inside the building.
Okay, so in terms of PDP, that makes sense. But, let's say we just forget anyone on Tier 2 and Tier 3, just, they exist, but for this purpose, they don't, right? So, if in the back of the mind, in reality, we are aware that there's possibility of changing of ownership in some form or fashion, that PDP that's originally approved, let's say, I don't know, it's a multi-bedroom apartment, okay, just for the generalization of it. But let's say the PDP is approved, it gets handed over to a different owner or company than that multi-apartment, which does fit or align with their comprehensive plan, all of a sudden becomes just all studio apartments. It's a slight departure from the original variation, but it's different enough that it could have the economic impact. And I'm just curious, like, what's the final, like, what's the granular level in which we can start to pull in, like, number 11, the extent to which there's a need for the use in community, without overstepping our legal obligations? Does that make sense?
It does. So, I think the sort of straight answer to your question is, there is a list, there's another section of the UDO that comes after this list of criteria that specifies what sort of changes are allowed within the framework of moving from a preliminary development plan to a final development plan that doesn't kick it back to you through the Planning Commission and City Council to hold another public hearing on a new preliminary development plan. There's a very specific list of what those are, and City Staff evaluates that list every time a scenario like this comes up. And it does come up, and so that analysis is conducted by City Staff. Ultimately, a determination is made whether it's a substantial enough change that it requires a new PDP hearing. So that's the basic answer to your question. And then as to factor number 11 specifically, the extent to which there is a need for the use in the community, that one and the economic impact factor, which comes right after that, those are the kind of factors that are really not commonly analyzed in depth by City Staff or by the Planning Commission and City Council. And for the most part, I've seen a little bit more scrutiny on the intensity of certain types of uses that repeat themselves, that are repeating themselves in the city. So I've started to hear that type of discussion happen on certain applications. But for the most part, that hasn't really been a concern in least sum it up to this point. It could be going forward as we see more of the same types of applications. Now, how you relate that specific factor, extent to which there's a need for the use in the community, back to the first part of your question, what if we have an apartment complex and it changes to a new owner with different changes? I think you've probably already made the decision that that land use is valid for this piece of property, and now it kicks into the analysis that I just described, which is, is there enough changes to this preliminary development plan that we need to go back through a new public hearing, and you get to make a fresh decision on that application?
So is there any way, as we go through the process, to ask questions within our ability? When we, whenever we have our Planning Commissions, they're live. People can see it. So it's technically, well, it is on record. It's not technically, it is on record. So, what's that fine line of questions we can ask to ensure that it has been spoken, people have heard, the applicant is aware, this is our original intent, without imposing on what we cannot? It's like, how close can we get to the line where we're crossing over what we shouldn't be asking, but still understanding that this is our intent, this is how we understand the application, this is what we're wanting to move forward and see as an end result?
So I think I would still go back to the main points that I ended with, which is, is your line of questioning related to the zoning regulations, this company's ability to meet the zoning regulations, and what's shown on the preliminary development plan, and what's shown on the elevations? And we've had some instances, so I'll think back to, I came back in-house back in late 2018, and it was early 2019 where we had a couple of projects, they started to be developed, and Development Services staff came to me with questions that were raised, I think in one case by a council member, in another case by a citizen. And the question was, this project, this project is not being developed precisely the way that the applicant told us what they would do when we went through the public hearing. And my answer to them was, let's pull out the zoning ordinance, let's pull out the PDP, let's pull out the elevations, and take a look at what those documents say. And if this company is building within the confines of the zoning ordinance, the applicable zoning regulations, the PDP and the elevations, if they're doing something different that the original applicant said they would do, it's not binding on the city. It has to be within the framework of our zoning regulations, the PDP, or the elevations. And so that's my main point. If a company's standing here saying, I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do that, and it's not binding, and it's not part of the zoning ordinance, then it's not something that we have any enforcement for later.
That helps, thank you.
So, okay, but we can keep going on and on with this, and I'll go to you next Councilmember Level. It's just that I started off bragging about the Planning Commission and what a great job they're doing, and you guys are doing a great job. So, I know this is hard, but you obviously, Mayor Protem Lopez whispered to me, I don't think we've been sued in the last 10 years for something like this. So in other words, I'm not trying to steal your thunder, it's just that we're doing pretty good.
Right, so-
And I just don't want to, I don't want to stress everybody out, thinking that, you know, I want to make sure that they know that we just need to be mindful.
Right, and that's exactly my point.
And that you and I need to call a recess if we need to, to give everybody time to reconsider what we're about to say. So, Councilmember Level, go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. So I was just thinking, and where this really applies, because what we were saying was, like, elevations, design elements, but we really can't look inside the building. But I think that that's like, we really should be, we are looking inside the building, especially for multifamily. And so if part of, you know, like, how are we, if they're going, why can't we make them represent that the quality inside the building is going to meet certain criteria, just like we do with elevations? And maybe that's something we need to look at for multifamily, but if there's incentives tied to it, if there are things that are making this, like, we should be able to make sure that they're being held accountable to what was put on record, or that it needs to be submitted, and maybe it is submitted with the PDP and some of the materials they're going to use on inside, but that the inside of the apartments is material to the quality of the development. It may not be for a commercial building, but I think it is for multifamily, especially if using those materials is going to drive up rent rate, right? Because you're going to be using quality materials, it can drive up the rent rate, and you're also needing incentive to make that work. Now, what I'm hearing is that they could just come in and do it not to that quality, lower their basis for the loan, collect the incentive on the pilot for something else. It feels like we're exposed there.
So, that adds another element to the discussion, which is a good point, actually. So, if there's only the land use decision, let's say there's a project with no incentives, then everything I said applies, and I won't repeat everything that I've said. If there's incentives for the project, we do have substantially more discretion. We probably have more discretion than the City Council's exercised in the past. Incentives for a project is purely discretionary. It's a lower legal standard to meet than even the zoning test. And the zoning test, if we're sued, the zoning laws favor the city substantially. With incentives, there's even more discretion. So if we want to talk about those issues in the context of incentives on top of, or separate from, the zoning decision, that's, we can certainly do that. And everything you said is a very valid concern.
Yeah, I would just think that that would be maybe something we want to make sure is, like, we're getting something on record that's legally defensible if they don't meet those criteria, especially when there's an incentive tied to it or something, especially multifamily specifically.
Right, and the incentives are specific to a party. We enter into a contract with a specific party in the case of incentives.
Good stuff. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. David, could you give Council some guidance on when we're in the public hearing process, and a project goes through the Planning Commission and is headed to Council, whether or not Councilmembers should be interacting with the developers? Because I think, I feel like that's gone a number of different ways, and it's really uncomfortable having a developer call after it's gone through planning, and they're like, I'm going to tell you what happened to planning, at planning, and I want you to fix it when it comes to Council. So just a little guidance would be great.
I'll go ahead and give you my answer, and then I may look to my right and see if our city attorney wants to add anything. Re-zoning decisions are legislative decisions, which means that as legislators, you are, you can be lobbied by the applicant. That's very different than if it's a special use permit. That's something that should be made entirely on the record, and you should not be talking with the outside parties in the case of a special use permit. You can legally talk with the outside parties, and the outside parties, and the applicant, in the case of, in the case of a zoning decision. However, our recommendation is that you minimize that to the greatest extent possible, because that is the situation where you could be accused of making a decision that's not based on the record and the evidence and testimony that's in the public hearing. You're always free to say, I don't want to talk to you, I'd like, come to the public hearing and give me your testimony, and I'll consider it then. You don't have to talk to the outside parties. But our advice is to minimize, two points really, minimize your contact in that regard, and our best advice is, if you do have those communications with them, disclose on the record that you had communications with the applicant or any other applicable outside party, but I will be making my decision based on the evidence and the testimony that you receive in the public hearing. That's always a good disclosure. And now I'll look over here and see if he has anything to add. Okay, I hear it all.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dave. Appreciate all of this. So, just going back to that question first from Councilmember Edson, I think you've said before, if we have had conversations outside of the public hearing process, have you made a recommendation that we disclose that?
Yes.
Okay, I just remember, and try to remember if we've talked about that before.
Yes, that's right.
And the reason for disclosing is just, again, just giving the public the chance to know that we've had that? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so for that reason, also it helps to create a better record. It lets the other decision-makers know that you've had those communications, it discloses to the public you've had those communications. If it's a public hearing setting where, let's say it's contentious, and you have the applicant, and you have parties speaking against it, you're disclosing to everybody, hey, I've talked with the applicant about this application, but I will be making the decision based on the evidence and testimony that I hear tonight, not based on what I heard outside the public hearing. That's protection for you, and it's protection for the city.
And that's the phrase that I, I'm glad you just said what you just said, because that's the phrase that we should use before disclosing.
Correct.
I had a conversation outside of this setting, but I will be basing my decision based on what is presented today.
Correct.
That's what we need to remember when we're having that.
Yes, that would make your attorneys very happy.
Thank you. And I'm just going to go back to Councilmember Level, like, we've been talking about zoning and land use and elevation, so that, obviously we have limitations there, but when Council enters into a different conversation when it comes to incentives, there is, and you used the words wholly discretionary, so absolute discretion, meaning if, when we're basing it on incentives, we're, we talked about it being a much lower bar to cross over if we were to be sued for not proving an incentive.
Yeah, so I would want you to articulate a reason, but it could be just about any reason, like, I don't think this is a good, articulate a reason for us. And that's the lower standard that we need to meet in the case of incentives.
So, going back to some of Councilmember Pryor and Councilmember Level, they may have, we may have those same concerns in the zoning process, in the PDP process. Those concerns may be within us, or may be asked of us, but those kind of things should actually not enter that conversation so much, except if we can fit it under one of the 18 criteria.
Correct, and that's where I would recommend that you lean on the factors that are valid zoning and land use factors for your decision. And there usually are multiple of those with any project.
But if one of the factors in our minds, or constituents' minds, is, we don't like this project, and it's in the incentive phase, discretionary, there's a lot more flexibility there on the part of the Council's decision.
Correct.
And I think that may kind of channel some of those thoughts of, okay, citizens are upset about whatever, okay. And then, conceptual presentation versus public hearing. We talk about a lot of things in conceptual presentation. We end up kind of going through the whole thing, it seems like. So, but we are, what limitations do we have in that setting? Because I think what we've been talking about is public hearing.
Correct.
So, we mix, we mix it all up in the conceptual presentation, it seems to be.
Yes, and so we actually had very specific discussion on that point with the Community and Economic Development Committee as we were considering changes to the city's economic development incentive policy. And one of the points that we specifically raised on two occasions is, would you like to continue to receive as much information and detail at the conceptual stage as we have been, or would you like to move that to a more higher level? And the feedback, the sort of resounding feedback that we received from the CDC was, continue to do what you're doing, because that makes for a better decision. I'm able to give the company better feedback if I have more information about the project at the conceptual stage. However, we still want to create a complete public hearing. And I think it's good to have full discussion during the public hearing, but the documentation that we put in the meeting packet is very thorough, and that's a great deal of protection for us also.
It's, and I don't recall exactly what we do when we're having that public hearing. Do we have a, we don't have a similar type of disclosure, like, if I'm saying I've met with someone outside of the meeting, and now, but now I'm going to base my decision on the public record in this public hearing, are we, we're not doing a similar type of thing, saying, we had a prior conceptual presentation, but decisions today will be made based on information presented in the public hearing?
So I think there's a slightly lesser concern, but it's still a good idea to do that, because ultimately, that sort of disclosure protects you as an elected official from allegations of collusion or bad faith in your decision-making process. And that's applicable to both incentive decisions and zoning decisions.
Good questions, all across the board. All right. Mr. Bouschek.
Confused, but then you clarified quite a few times. Yes.
Again, all of this is just about being mindful and doing the best we can. We're just trying to be the best bodies, governmental bodies that we can be. Yes, sir, you want to?
Yeah, so one last thought, something you said triggered something, and I think I've said this to the City Council in the past, but I'll say it again. Anytime I'm sitting in a zoning hearing at the Planning Commission or at the City Council, you know, back there at the tables, I always have a filter going on as your zoning and planning attorney, to make sure that you're making a legally defensible decision. Like I said, that's sort of my prime directive as your planning and zoning attorney, are you making a legally defensible decision? And since I've been back in-house for five-plus years, I haven't seen anything that's come close. I think we've been fine. I'll end there.
Thank you. That's good. Still, we're sharpening our tools tonight, and our, you know, making ourselves better as far as we approach things, and we do want the best and most quality, and we want the highest standard, you know, we want the highest quality of living for all of our citizens in every way. So, I think these have been great questions. I think it's been great discussion as well. Is there, is there more that you wanted to cover tonight, Mr. Bouschek?
No, I'll stop there. I think that's sufficient.
What about you, Mr. Chairperson Thunk?
No, I'm good. I think for, for, I think, there, Councilmember Shields and Councilmember Pryor said something about the 18 criteria. I know on Thursday nights, I like to push Dave to the limit, and I think if you look through these 18 criterias, I think we can get inside the door a little bit, not all the way, but we can get in there a little ways.
Okay, so, I do want to reiterate that I love these meetings. You all sound like a bunch of wonks, as far as, you know, the details, and I think that shows the, our citizens, that we actually, we may not be the experts that Mr. Bouschek is, or Mr. Johnson and others, but, you know, we're students of the, of, you know, the discussion, and we are looking out for our citizens the best we can. And I think you all work together really well. I think the chemistry on the Planning Commission is phenomenal, and I think it's the same on Council. I think, I think you guys do a great job of talking things through, and you can just tell, you guys, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it. So, well done on that, on that format. I think we'll break in a minute, but before I do, if there's any other, Mr. Dunning, you want to add, yeah?
Yeah, just a couple of things from a staff perspective, right? Our role is to facilitate a decision-making process, and we do have additional layers through these processes. We referenced, Josh referenced the neighborhood meeting. That is a requirement we put in as a process. And oftentimes, I know all of you are contacted, right, and say, what do I do? And that neighborhood meeting is a wonderful opportunity to say, go to the neighborhood meeting, share your concerns there. That helps Planning Commission, and the Council, and the developer bring forward a project that addresses those concerns. So I encourage everybody to go to those neighborhood meetings if you have concerns or want to learn more about the project. From a staff perspective, we intentionally do not go to those. That's a time for the developer, the applicant, to have time with the surrounding neighborhoods, unless the developer requests us. neighborhoods, unless the developer requests us to be there. So we intentionally stay out of that process, and we're going to make that very clear. The other thing I'm really proud of with, with our team is utilization of technology and a reminder that that development mapping tool is out there so folks can see what, from their computer, what's, what's going in various areas of town. I know quite a few people that utilize that tool and then share news of what's coming to Lee Summit. So that's a pretty powerful tool. And then the last thing I'd share is, just a reminder, as staff, as we do our work, our role is to bring forward a recommendation. And when you see staff bring forward a recommendation of approval, really what that's saying is, this rezoning, this PDP meets our criteria, right? It's not to say that we recommend this business or, it feels weird to say staff's recommending approval. That's the language that we use to say that we've run it through all of our filters and we recommend approval. If it doesn't meet all of our criteria, that's where you'll see requesting modifications and waivers and things of that nature. So just a few points to note as the, as the process flows.
Talking like a true former development services department head. Yes, we don't want to be accusing staff of pushing something through when they're just trying to do their jobs. So it's, it's got to be tough on staff at times, so. Well, I really, I'm telling you, this is symbolic, these types of meetings are symbolic. So thank you for attending. I love the fact that you're almost all here. I mean, I think we're missing like one person. This is, that means a lot to us as council. It means a lot to me as mayor. It really does. And I think it shows, you know, what we talked about, just, just how serious you take your jobs. And so, again, I thank you all. And with that, Mr. Chairperson Funk, would you like any final word?
Thank you, Mayor and the council for having us. I think this was a great discussion, and as always, you and I keep a good line of communication open, and if something comes up and we need to dig a little deeper, just let us know. We'll do it.
Thank you so much. I'm going to take a break so we can shake your hands and tell you thank you in person, and we'll come back at, we'll come back in about 15 minutes.
All right, we're gonna bring this meeting back to order. We are now to the second work session or presentation we're having tonight. This is a discussion between Mayor, City Council members, and the currently Lee Summit Economic Development Council Board of Directors. It was it was nice that we had the Planning Commission right before this, so you can kind of see how this works as far as how we can facilitate this, you know, as far as as Chair. So if you just, if you want to speak, just raise your hand, I'll try to either acknowledge you, put you in the queue, I'll write down who's next and try to keep track. Usually, I'm pretty good at that. Second, the, I want to brag about the council, I mean, I think, hopefully you saw, we're able to have some pretty detailed discussions with Planning Commission about details when it comes to zoning and more. And so I want to brag on the council for a minute and just say that, you know, we do have an excellent reputation for decision-making and in a civil decorum. We do have joint meetings with the school board, the parks board, the planning commission, as you saw, and we, I think, overall have a very good reputation for collaboration. Each of these council member works on a committee, committees as far as for the city, and they help do the heavy lifting ahead of the city council meetings. And they put a lot of time in. We have citizen boards also that each of us serve as liaisons to. We also have regional organizations that we're active with, Mid-America Regional Council, Missouri Municipal League, Little Blue Valley Sewer District, the Eastern Jackson County Betterment Council, and many more. We did put together a strategic plan. Took us like eighteen months to get through that, and then we followed it up by helping the Planning Commission with a nine-month, I think it was about nine months, I asked Chairman, Chairman Funk tonight how long it took, and it was a while. And we got deep into a lot of discussions on that. And all of these commitments and and more have an extensive amount of discussions regarding economic development. Our city's development department, I think, is, has as good a reputation as it gets in the region. The, I think that they are supported by, I, I'm biased, but the best administration, you know, in the, in the region, I just think that the department, the develop, develop, developmental services is amazing. David Bushak is phenomenal, so our, and Brian Head, our legal team. So I do think that we as, we support all of these as a council, as a very hard-working council. We are all about teamwork, we're professional, and we have a track record. Passed and approved billions of dollars in new construction that include every aspect of healthy economic development. From commercial retail, commercial office, commercial industrial, residential, single-family, and multifamily, and we're known for being business-friendly. And in the last few years, we've attracted many businesses here, been a part of that, hundreds upon hundreds of jobs and millions of of dollars in sales tax, additional dollars in sales tax and property tax revenues that we've been able to add to the budget. And right now, we have a pipeline, even though it's weird times, we still have a pipeline of activity that most cities would be quite envious for, of. And I just want to say that, you know, this is a result of decades of work by past and present civic leaders. It's also a product, byproduct of having great schools, public and private, great parks, award-winning parks. You know, just, just we're blessed in so many ways with all these beautiful homes and a variety of housing options. And then we have, of course, our little cherished gem right outside these doors, the downtown charming historic, you know, activity center that I think we're, we're quite proud of. And here we are reinvesting in that, so we're all about economic development as far as the council goes. And I think all of these are things that we need to be discussing with our economic development organization. These are the items of business that your board members should be talking about with our city council members on a regular basis. And that's what I've been advocating for with the EDC for, from day one stepping into the office. I've always strongly encouraged city council to engage with the EDC and for the EDC to engage with city council. I did, to prepare for this meeting, I did provide city council members, you know, the board meeting minutes from the EDC the last year. I provided them with the letters back and forth last fall and including emails about civil decorum and and things of that nature. I provided a timeline, stamped the timeline with the incidents and events that we've kind of struggled with over the last couple of years. And so I've, I've done everything I can to make sure that they are informed. I think that the EDC's requested this work session to make an appeal, to consider starting anew with the EDC rather than starting over with a new EDO. And I would like to have that discussion. And I've let city council know that I want to keep this meeting as forward-facing as possible. We, I don't think we can get anywhere if we're gonna just try to hash out old grievances. The best way to not make state, to avoid that is to not make statements that are not backed by facts. And it was really hard, the last time that the EDC was represented in this room, you know, the statements were made that were not accurate. I didn't really feel I could, it was a distraction to respond to them at that moment. Never said that the EDC only had a leadership problem at the operations level. I've always stated that we have a leadership problem at the operations level and the board level. January, I did not state that I would like to renegotiate the PSA contract. That's when, in January, was when I was calling for a change in board leadership. These types of statements, you know, they cause a lot of, they cause a lot of angst. And especially the parts that were disparaging remarks about me. I can move forward past that, but we're gonna have to avoid that tonight. We can't, we can't go down that path. So let's, let's keep this forward-facing like what, like I've mentioned. I think, I know, everybody at this table wants what's best for Lee Summit. So let's see what we can, the things that we can agree upon. And with that, this is the interim chair, Bill Brown. Member Brown, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to be here, as the mayor indicated. My name is Bill Brown. I'm actually the vice chairman. We don't have an interim chairman right now, we've not filled that, so, but I guess I'm the most senior person serving on the board at this time. I thought it might be helpful before we get into this too, to maybe let the other members of the board make self-introductions. But we've got a few members that were not here with us tonight, and I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. David Buck, obviously, the superintendent of Lee Summit School District serves on the board. Laurel Hoag, University of Central Missouri, Lee Summit Campus. Clint Haynes, Next Gen Wealth. Keith Dorian with AO Huber Construction. And John McDonald then with the Lee Summit Hospital. We've got a few vacancies on the board, and we have let those remain fallow over the last couple of months while we were waiting to see how the discussion with economic development would proceed. And then, of course, City Manager Dunne and Mayor Baird are also on the executive committee as well as on our Board of Directors. I appreciate the, the mayor's comments, because I think our intent behind the request to meet with you was that we did want to be forward-thinking. And we want to propose a path that moves us forward on the issue of economic development in Lee Summit. And so we hope to use the opportunity tonight, certainly to answer any questions and address any issues that you all might have as members of the council. But I think we also wanted to maybe share some initial thoughts with you that we hope to engender a good discussion among those that are assembled here. The, I do know that John McDonald, I believe, sent a email or a letter out to the members of the council and the staff. I think that John did a really good job of capturing, I think, what we'd like to talk about here tonight and and where the board is with that. But if it's okay with you all, I'm gonna pass the mic and just ask each of the other members maybe to introduce themselves. Again, I'm Bill Brown, I am the vice chairman of the EDC. This is my second go-round on the, on the executive committee, and I'm currently employed at Paragon Star LLC.
I'm Mike Van Buskerk, Vice Chairman of Newmark Zimmer. We're commercial realtors and developers throughout the Kansas City metro area. More importantly, I've been a Lee Summit resident, I was just trying to figure it out by how old my, my oldest is, so I think about twenty-five years I've been a Lee Summit resident. And I've been involved in multiple things throughout the community.
Good evening, hi, Tom Jackson, been a resident here since nineteen eighty-nine in Lee Summit. I'm Regional President of Central Bank, I'm here also in Lee Summit. Central Bank has ninety-seven employees that work in Lee Summit, we have four hundred and fifty employees total. I've been in commercial lending for many years. Right now, I'm responsible for about one point two billion dollars of commercial loans, many of which are here in southeastern Jackson County.
I'm Larry Hillier, I'm the current treasurer of the organization. I was a, about a thirty-year resident of Lee Summit, recently transplanted to Raymore. I work with Equity Bank, I've been there for about twelve years. And locally, we have probably about seventy-five employees here in the metro with seven hundred employees across the region.
Teresa Evans, and I'm the interim executive director for the EDC. I served the Lee Summit EDC for almost a third of the time it's been in existence. I was here for eleven years as vice president. I spent six years in Blue Springs with economic development. I spent about two and a half years with the state during COVID, which was an adventure. And then was asked to come back in and and fill this role now as we're working through the interim position or the time.
Hi, my name is Dan Rexroth, I'm president and CEO at John Knox Village. I have met some of you, but not all of you, so I'm a rather newbie to Lee's Summit, been at John Knox Village for a little over thirty-three years. So I hope that works out. John Knox Village has been in Lee's Summit for over fifty-three years. So we've been here a long time, seen the community grow from really about twenty-five percent of what it was back in, in nineteen seventy to the growth that has happened, and it's been tremendous. We have a thousand associates at John Knox Village, we call them associates, employees at John Knox Village. And we invest, over the course of the last decade or two, we've invested tens of millions of dollars. Every three or four years, we've got projects, redevelopment projects, investment in the community, growing age demographic. We serve thousands of people in the greater Kansas City area. We serve about fifteen hundred people that live on our campus, but we serve the whole community, generally seniors in Lee Summit and really all around Kansas City. So we love Lee Summit, it's a growing community, kind of staked our claim here, we think that's an important, it's important that we partner with the community, and we do try to be a good community partner.
Thanks, Dan. So as Bill mentioned, John McDonald couldn't be here tonight, but he did want me to pass along a few statistics about Lee Summit Medical Center. So between both Lee Summit Medical Center and St. Luke's East, we're two of the larger contributors to the Economic Development Council. Lee Summit Medical Center has an annual payroll of about sixty-five million dollars and has five hundred FTEs and a headcount of around seven hundred. And they have invested about seventy million dollars in capital over the last five years, and they have, they have more to come on the way. My name is Bobby Ohm Shipman, I am the CEO of the South and East Region of St. Luke's Health System. So that is St. Luke's South Hospital in Overland Park, and that is St. Luke's East Hospital here in Lee Summit. And St. Luke's East has been a proud member of this community since two thousand and five. We have grown almost continuously with the community since we opened our doors. We currently employ about thirteen hundred people, or I'm sorry, thirteen hundred FTEs and about fifteen hundred people. Our payroll, not counting physicians, is about a hundred million dollars a year. We will have invested over the last five years, once by the time we complete the construction, that I'm sure many of you are seeing taking place on the northern part of the campus, about a hundred million dollars in investment and in major capital on the campus. So, so we believe in this community, we believe that it's important for us to support this community. I did lead out intentionally by mentioning that I am a regional CEO. And so I, because of that, have a very regional perspective. And because St. Luke's Health System is a regional healthcare provider, we have a very regional perspective. And I would agree with the mayor, this council has an outstanding reputation, and this city has an outstanding reputation in the community and the region in both states. And I, I think there is a great track record of collaboration and partnership and focus on those incredibly important things like schools, city services, business development, the tax base. All of those things that make a very vibrant and strong community. And I also agree that this city has an incredible pipeline of business opportunities. I will tell you, that is not a unique situation for Lee Summit. There are many communities in this, in this region that have those strong pipelines. I think there are a few of them poised to take advantage of those strong pipelines, and I think this is one of them that is uniquely poised to take great advantage of them. Now, I think there are important conditions for those advantages, for those opportunities to be taken advantage of. And one of them, I think, is a strong public-private collaboration around business development, economic development, and economic attraction. And that's really the purpose of why we're here tonight, you know. I listened to the council's comments and conversations the last time you all met, and I think we have a very shared priority in terms of moving forward. I heard loud and clear from the council that you all want to move forward and move forward quickly, and I, and I think that's exactly right. I think that is the imperative, is moving forward and doing it quickly. I believe as we stand before you or sit before you tonight, we represent a great pathway to move forward quickly. And for a couple of reasons. You have a number of investors, a strong investor base that has largely been maintained over the last couple of years and is very dedicated to this community. I think you've heard from the folks here, we, we all have businesses, we all represent a huge portion of this community in terms of our employees, in terms of the individuals we serve. We're dedicated and believe in this community, and and we're volunteers. We have invested with our checkbooks as well. I mentioned, you know, John and and St. Luke's East, we're, we're two of the largest contributors to, to the Lee Summit Economic Development Council. But a number of folks up here are and have been for a number of years. And so I think you have that private commitment to economic development and business recruitment and retention. You have the organizational structure, the five oh one C four that is ready to go, it's been chartered, it exists. There are bylaws, and I will admit, and I appreciate the mayor sort of setting the stage by saying that the goal tonight is not to look backwards. But I think it is important to at least acknowledge, there are things in our history we need to correct. Our bylaws do not reflect the Economic Development Council we need for the future. There are relationships we need to mend and develop. There's collaboration between our organization, the city council, the Chamber of Commerce, downtown Lee Summit, School District, a number of different agencies and organizations. We, we need to strengthen those, and we take ownership of that. I personally take ownership. I personally take ownership of that. And the mayor has said the board needs to take more ownership of that and he's right, we do. We also, though, have a great reputation in the region with KCADC and with other development bodies that are really important portals for economic development in the region. I think that is important, too, is those relationships help us deliver value, deliver prospects very, very quickly. The last comment I make and then I'll hand it over to someone else is that we do, I think, value the relationship with city council and it is a public-private partnership that is an incredibly effective tool for this city to attract and retain businesses. The public-private partnership allows us flexibility, it allows us agility, it allows prospective businesses to have a peer, perhaps a representative business, someone that they can sort of ask about, how does it work in Lee's Summit? And then they also have the city that they can go to for incentives, for whatever else it might be. And I think that public-private partnership is an incredibly strong asset that the city has historically had and that I think could be leveraged as we go into the future. I appreciate the opportunity and I'll stop there.
Thanks, Bobby. And I'll just add to that, I believe that last count, the private partnership was over 50% of the EDC. So I think it's somewhere between 55% to 60%. We've retained most of our members. Last time we connected, collected dues, we've had kind of this interim period, but we've retained 85% to 90% of our members. So I think we've got, we've got strong support for the EDC within the business community and all of the major employers, all of the major businesses in Lee's Summit are really a part of this organization. So what we'd like to do tonight really is talk about, you know, the future. And I've got a handful of items that I think that we're willing to commit to. And I think a good principle in life and in business is simple solutions are generally the best solutions. No reason to overcomplicate, there's no reason to reinvent. We acknowledge that there have been issues in the past that have needed to have been dealt with. We think we have addressed those. We think there's more that we need to address. But when you overcomplicate, when you come up with solutions that are difficult, that takes more time and there's also unintended consequences. So I think that what we would like to propose is let's take a look at the bylaws, let's review the bylaws, let's take a look at the best practices that have been, we've had a consultant come in, we have a strategic plan, let's adopt those, let's take a look at that, let's further develop those, let's come up with action plans with specific dates, let's develop a new PSA. Let's reconstitute the Board of Directors as needed. There's changes that be made. If there's problems with any of us up here at the table, let's get rid of us. So I think we're all willing to do that. I jest, right, Bobby?
Sure.
Okay. Let's hire a new leader of the organization. That's critically important. And, you know, if we need to rebrand the organization, we can rebrand the organization. But I think that, you know, there's at least five or six specific items there. We've laid out actually a tentative timeline. We're happy to share that with you. I won't go through all those dates with you, but we think over the course of the next few months, we can make all those things happen. The people that sit around this table are business people that are making major decisions every day. We are action-oriented people and we can make these things help with your participation and input. We can make these things happen over the next few months. I think what Bobby said is critical, time is of the essence. We think it's critical that we move forward and that we not delay.
Go ahead, sir. Well, that was, so again, I think, you know, what we wanted to do, and again, in keeping with the looking forward, was to come with a concrete steps that we could take, an outline of what we as an organization are prepared to do. And we wanted to put that in front of you and perhaps use that as a basis for discussion, as I said earlier. I don't think we want to dwell on the past, but there may be other questions and issues that the council wants to dialogue. We've not done this directly with you, so we understand that. I don't remember if it was Bobby or Dan that indicated, but I mean, we have certainly as a board understood that errors were made and we have been attempting, in our mind anyway, over the last 14 months to address those issues. I think part of what we were looking to do or that we subscribe to was that there was a process that the council indicated and the mayor wanted to go through, which was a review of the best practices before we did anything. There was then a discussion of wanting to have a community dialogue and I think many of us here at this table participated in that, as well as a number of our other investors in order to give feedback. So that was really, frankly, we thought we were subscribing to a pathway that was moving us in the direction that we would then have the discussion that we're having tonight. So that's what we thought was going to happen and what we were hoping was going to happen. And so I guess that's kind of where we are right now. We've got a consultant's recommendation out there, but it's a recommendation and we thought, let's go ahead and have the, if you would be so inclined to have the discussion then, about what it might look like going forward using the existing corpus of the EDC.
Councilmember Prior.
Are you first to ask questions or?
I was going to let the board say whatever they want to say to us and I prefer to wait until you give us the go-ahead to start asking questions because I'd rather, it's always best to get everything out and then have the discussion afterwards. So when we do presentations and such, I usually don't even stop to ask questions until we've heard from both applicant and staff. So if you have some other things you'd like to add, we could benefit from.
Mike, Tom, Dean, or Larry?
Oh, Mike, just one little comment is that it hasn't been mentioned yet. In addition to all the positives that we have, as the Treasurer, we do have a little over 300,000 in cash to kind of jumpstart this new organization, whatever this organization looks like. And I think that's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. Okay, so I was just wondering what an ideal EDC looks like to any of you and how does that differ from how it's been in the past and how do you plan on achieving that in the future? I know it kind of addresses it here, but in a little more depth.
Well, I think that, again, we are open to taking a look at the makeup of the board and the bylaws and what that looks like. You know, it currently provides for both the city manager as well as the mayor. They're a part of the executive board and we would look at that and see if there's a discussion of a way to do that. I think our conversations, at least most recently and in light of the presentation made by the consultant, we've had individual meetings with members of the Board of Directors, with the Chamber of Commerce, talking with them about this. I think that we do plan on meeting with full boards sometime in the near future and we've talked about scheduling that. I think there is a way, and we would like to do that with the other PSA, with downtown and certainly now that we've got the Visitors Bureau and how we would engage on that. So I think there's a way to connect the dots with some additional communication. I don't think the structure, and I think even the, to some degree, the consultant, if I remember, said this, there's all different kinds of structures. He showed you five different ones as an example when we went through the best practices. That's less about the structure, I think, in terms of how this operates and it was more about the practices. I think we would focus on the practices and how we implement that. One example that we do have is there is a strategic plan that was worked on by the three PSAs and city staff. It was never adopted by the other organizations besides the LSEDC, but the idea behind that was that let's take a look at the needs of the community. I'm not sure that it covered everything, but what are the needs? What are the roles? Who would take lead responsibility for certain things? I think we all agreed looking at that and I wasn't a part of the conversation beforehand, only afterwards, but when you take a look at that, there are things that the downtown Lee's Summit group is probably best to handle within that ecosystem that we talk about. Certainly parts with the chamber, we think there are with the EDC and there's roles for the city of Lee's Summit and its staff. So to me, I would start with taking a look at the best practices report, the targeted industry report that was done, and also then that strategic plan and say, what are we missing here? I will tell you one of the things that we've had some conversation and I'd like us to get kind of moving on, you see a lot of discussion about childcare. It's becoming a bigger issue for businesses all across the country right now and it doesn't matter whether you're a five-person accounting shop or you're a huge hospital, everybody's got the daycare issue. I think there's something that we would be able to come together with that group. There's a great opportunity to do that. We have the World Cup. What is the Lee's Summit response going to be? It's so that we can get some activations, I think they call them, and we would have some of the folks looking to come here. Perfect lineup with the Visitors Bureau and being able to take advantage of that. More and more transportation, we hear that. There's a number of new models that are being used out there right now that don't have fixed systems. They're not the street car, they're not the bus system, they're frankly very Uber or Lyft-like, just-in-time kind of transportation. Those are the kind of things, I think, that were not identified at any of the best practices, but they're issues that we could look and talk about. We've talked about putting, I think actually our bylaws provide for a member of the chamber to serve on our board, but you know, that hasn't happened and so our intent would be to work more closely with those other organizations. I know we talk about collaboration and we've kind of started that, we fell down on that, but that is something, I think, it really is communication, using some of these areas that I've talked about as really the basis on what would drive us. To Bobby's point and to Dan's point, it gets us there a lot faster. We don't need to recreate the wheel. We need to take a look at what we've had, what's worked, what we need to improve on, where the gaps are, address those gaps, and then we agree to move forward.
A couple of comments. One, as I mentioned, I work around the metro area, so I've been involved in a lot of EDCs. And I will tell you when to hear Larry talk about the private support that we have, almost 60% of our budget was private. That's all, these folks at the table and a lot of others, 100 other companies writing checks to become a member of this organization. There's a lot of EDCs we're members of I've never wrote a check to. So that's the first thing I want to make bring to the table. And a lot of those companies aren't Lee's Summit companies. They're companies that see the potential of Lee's Summit, just like I do, is why I spent so much time here. They're engineering firms, they're general contractors, they see the potential of business opportunities and they write a check to be part of our community. So I think that's pretty powerful. The other thing I'll mention, you know, when you're directly answering your question, is the bylaws have been brought up several times. Those bylaws, organization's almost 40 years old. And by the way, I think, although no one's been able to prove it, I think my company was one of the original members. But anyway, set that aside, you know, those bylaws need to be redone. And from the other EDC organizations I have been involved with and been on the board of, I think our board is structured by those bylaws, is not a very strong board. It's basically set up as a reporting tube board with an executive committee that runs the day-to-day business along with the executive director. So I can tell you that I've had more meetings of this board over the last 14 months than I'd had my previous, I don't know when my term runs off, but my previous time on the board. I've had more meetings over the last, because we've been meeting on a regular basis. So I think that's just one example of things in the bylaws that need to be addressed. And that's stuff that can be done quickly with a group that works together with you all and some good legal counsel to help us figure it out, the way it should be structured.
Councilmember Prior, I've been a member of really effective EDCs and not-so-effective EDCs and the ones that I think are the most effective have some pretty common attributes. Their governance structure, I think, is a good balance between city leadership, the business community, and then important community organizations, the school district, the Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, and those kinds of things. There is appropriate and very professional leadership and staffing. This work takes a lot of time and takes a lot of energy and takes a lot of, if done correctly, proactive reaching out into other communities to, you know, present the opportunities that Lee's Summit has and is available. It takes really sourcing potential businesses and who might be interested in relocating, both on a regional, at a state, and at a national level. It requires a good strategic plan so that everybody in the community, investors of all backgrounds, know what exactly, what direction we are going in. It requires measures of success and to be honest, sometimes those are hard and sometimes those are softer measures and it's a challenge with economic development, but I think it's the reality. And last but not least, and I think something that I've heard the mayor consistently say is it requires consistent communication. And I think if you have all of those things, that seems to be a good recipe and a good roadmap. I think we have pieces of this in place now and could move to close gaps on the things we don't have in place reasonably quickly.
We also have a workforce development group in the EDC that is, I think, alive and active and really beginning to do some good things. I think that needs to continue. Obviously, workforce development in Lee's Summit is critically important to all the large and small employers and that's something that's, and we're very involved in that and that's a very active group right now. Although, a little bit short on some leadership, but the volunteer leaders have really stepped up in recent months.
Very good, thank you. Yes.
Thank you for, nope, yeah, thank you for your answers. I like what I'm hearing so far, so I'll give someone else the chance to ask.
Thank you. All right. Other questions or discussion points from councilmembers? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So how large is your board when it's fully operational and how many members do you currently have? You said that you hadn't been filling some of those vacancies, so I was just curious where we're at with that.
Eighteen is the normal number.
Yeah, eighteen.
And how many do you currently have?
I believe we have seven today.
Four vacancies.
So there's fourteen serving and eighteen total.
Correct.
Okay. And then you mentioned that you still have a large membership roster, but it sounded like in this interim period, maybe they're not all paying dues. How many like dues-paying members do you have right now?
We haven't sent out an invoice.
Okay.
So if we send out, and this, by the way, is a time period, I'll be in a meeting next week with my partners, going through all the organizations that we're members of throughout the metropolitan area and I have to defend being a membership of, so I'll be having that discussion next week because we're all doing our budgets just like everybody else and we gotta plug a number in. So I don't know the answer.
I believe it's a calendar year.
Generally, it is a calendar, but there are some that, depending on when they joined. So we have a big batch that normally would pay on a calendar, but there are some that aren't a fiscal year.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to get a feel for, at this point, are a lot of these just members on paper or are they really active, interested in continuing to contribute financially or where are people at with that? Are they waiting to see what happens in this discussion?
I'm speaking as myself and others I know of, they're all waiting to see what happens.
I think the last time we billed, we had, was it 85, it was over 85% retention.
Yes, and in August of '22, which would have been the beginning of this last fiscal year, '22 to '23, we had 120 year, '22 to '23, we had 125 investors. We have lost about 28 of those over the last year, which is very unusual, I think, with the uncertainty. Some were not comfortable reinvesting. We did put a, we typically invest, typically invoice in January and July are the biggest investments of invoicing cycles. We chose not to invoice in July because of the uncertainty, because we weren't sure of what we were promising people at that point. And so correspondence went out to all the investors that we were putting a pause on the invoicing until more was known, and that was the point at which we were waiting for the work session and then also the final report.
Okay. So you talk about, one of the first steps, if we were to move forward, be reviewing and proposing new bylaws. So who would be involved in that process? Would you expect, I don't know if it's possible or appropriate for someone from the city, obviously, members of city staff, the mayor are part of your board, so would they be part of that process to amend those bylaws?
I think absolutely, that would be the intent.
And what do you think, I understand that would be a process that you would go through, but what changes can you envision that would make this a more effective organization at this point?
One, I think, is the recommitment. I mean, we've talked about a series of things that were not being done, and, you know, again, I think some of the items, or many of the items that the mayor pointed out and the city pointed out when the PSA funding was cut off, were correct. And I think we've got to go back and be able to do some of those kind of things. I know one of the things that, and so I think you need to tighten up how it's operated. I think the functions that we were doing were not off-point, so whether it was workforce development, whether it was business and retention, whether it was our attraction efforts, those things were done, we've continued, or attempted to continue to do some of those things. The actual elements that were part of those, I think, eight areas that maybe were identified in the consultant's report, we need to continue to do that, and then I think look for the gap. The one thing that I think here that we've talked about is startup and new businesses. I don't know that they're really being addressed the way we should. I know there was an effort that was initiated to do that, but I think, I will just tell you, when I was working in Cass County with economic development down there, we established a small business development center in Raymore. We did it with the FEC so that we had a one-stop center for employers looking for training and looking for business startups that were operated out of the Raymore office. Those are the kind of things that I think that we can do. There's a lot of business planning that's going on through the library right here. I think we can strengthen those partnerships. There's a lot of things that are happening that if we sat down and looked at them and walked through where we wanted to establish priorities, I don't think we've got to start them from scratch. I think we'd go back and really look to improve the things that need to be improved on, which admittedly we fell down on, but I don't think, a lot of that was still being done, even though some of the governance issues at the board weren't being met.
So respectfully, I don't feel like my question was addressed. My question is, what would you change in the bylaws? What would you change structurally about the organization that you think would make it run more smoothly? It sounds like what you're saying is you feel like you're in a position that if you just recommitted, made some different strategic focus, that that would fix a lot of problems, but one of your main action items here is to propose new bylaws, and so I want to understand how that's going to help you achieve this.
I would start with looking at the bylaws of other organizations. Sometimes, as Dan said, the easiest path forward is the quickest path and the best path. So we don't have to start from scratch there, but I, as I already said earlier, I think a structure that has a more board strength that is a different structure than what we've had. And I've been on, I've been on boards, EDC boards before. So that's number one. And also, you know, I think that, very important to all of us, and I'm going to go off track, but I do think, the first time I heard business retention, and I mentioned this earlier, that was a very important part of this organization. We had a person who was visiting companies on a regular basis in Lee Summit. They are our best companies. Keeping companies here is, should be our number-one priority. Right now, we can't do that. You're looking at our staff, right here. And she's only got a limited amount of time that she works. So that is probably something, number one, that from a staffing standpoint, we've got to get professional staff back to, you know, the appropriate level. And right now, there's no business retention going on, proactive retention.
Well, I appreciate that feedback. As I look at this, Mayor, are you looking for just questions at this point or more opinions?
No, let's save it for other questions.
Absolutely.
And then give some feedback as far as opinions and such, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts and your vision for the future of economic development in Lee Summit and also of your organization. So, and you mentioned some board members who are not here, and I think, I know John, Mr. McDonald, gave us, obviously, his feedback. He's out of town. I think another one of those absent is also out of the country. And then, on third, at least, I understand had maybe an anniversary or birthday today for a family member. I don't know about Mr. Dorian, but.
And there's another event going on, I think, with the school district, the Dr. Buck.
Dr. Buck, of course, yes. So this, you all are, there would be others who would be represented had other conflicts not been in the way. I think that's helpful to know. And I appreciate Councilmember Shields asking about bylaws, and I think there's a good line of questioning here. I mean, I think in some ways, you're, and you can help me understand if this is, my understanding is correct, but you've pushed this pause button, even the pause on saying what those new bylaws might look like, because you're waiting for some direction. If the city would be willing to entertain a new engagement with you, is that perhaps part of the, you know, meaning you didn't bring a new set of bylaws for us to look at tonight?
Correct. I do think the public-private nature, I mean, we do have the public entities on there. We've, at least one PSA is on there. And then you've got the, you've got the private sector represented on there. I think keeping essentially that organization, to the point that Mike made, though, this is an executive committee-driven, the way the bylaws are. And to open it up and have a more participative board opportunity, again, I think those were one of the things that the mayor pointed out. There's, again, there's a lot of things the mayor pointed out that we really don't disagree with, with the criticism that was made of the EDC at that time. So we do need to rewrite it. I don't know how big of a redraft it is, but I think preserving the essential public-private nature of it is key to how this needs to function.
So a couple of things are just coming across my mind when it comes to how do you actually do that? Obviously, go find best, what are other EDC's bylaws look like? Do you engage a lawyer to assist? Not me, I don't want to do it. Although my law firm could have been involved at that entry point, Carl, probably. But engaging a lawyer to assist you with that, and you also made a comment about collaboration and, and collaboration is a great word, but if we don't have something in place that almost enforces it in a sense, kind of holds us accountable. So I liked what I heard about inviting a chamber, making sure there's always a board membership for a chamber member, or, meaning someone from that board or a executive level or whatever it might be, as well as from downtown Main Street. And so, just commenting on that, then, and I'm not sure how to, I don't have any suggestions on this, but then I just wrote the question down. You mentioned expanding the board or cycling off. What kind of thought process or discussion do you think you're having amongst yourselves in order to expand that board of directors, either to meet your full, the number you could have now, or simply, you know, ask amongst yourselves, who's ready for this challenge? Because if this is an aggressive timeline, and it's going to require, I mean, like a lot of us here at the table, we all have different things we're doing in our lives that are outside of this, it will ask a lot, I think, of those involved. So again, I don't know if you have any comments on how you would go about doing that and making sure that you really do have the team in front of you as a board that's going to help you bring that to pass.
I think as we've talked internally, at least, I know a couple of us have said, we'll do what we need to do to work through the process. It doesn't mean that we have to be on the board when it's all over and done. So, I mean, I think everybody here, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I mean, I think there's a commitment, and I think you at least heard that, to see this process through, to continue to remain on the board. Again, not knowing what that looks like, and again, as I said, there's not a requirement that, you know, I've got to be in the, on the board at the end of this thing, provided there's a process that we put together that we're comfortable with, and I think, again, keeps the public-private nature of this. The relationship with the city, in my opinion, is a lot of that is done through the PSA. And so while we want that engagement on the board, the real action then comes in the PSA, I think, in terms of how we interact with the city going forward around the funding that we would have. So I think it's important, and we've got some of those public positions on the board, and I think our intent would be, at least as we've talked about it, would be to continue that. But it's still, there's a significant public, or a significant private sector piece that we think that we've got to do, as you heard, sometimes up to almost 60% of the funds that we have at our disposal on any given year are raised from the private sector.
And I'm sorry, if I could just make one comment on that. You know, I think the governance structure, the bylaws, the governing documents, all of those things are incredibly important. I mean, I think, you know, we all work in organizations that have those things, and I think they provide guidance on the purpose of the organization and sort of fundamental principles of how the organization operates, what we exist to do, and all of those things. At the end of the day, the board, the governing documents, don't get stuff done. The team, the plan, the collaboration gets stuff done. And I believe I've heard from this council that that's a priority, is we need to get stuff done. And that's a priority for us as well. And I think the reality is, the group around this table, as directors, as council members, we're not all going to get stuff done. We need a team to do that. And I think the private sector is ready to invest in that team and has demonstrated a commitment to invest in that team, and I think we're asking for the city to make that same commitment. I will say, you know, Councilmember Shields, you had mentioned, I think, where you were alluding to with investors and sort of who's been maintained, and it really speaks to the financial risk of this organization. I think, to be fair, there is significant financial risk to the ongoing viability of this organization. I would say there is financial risk associated with any potential future direction the city chooses to take relative to economic development. And there is financial risk if the city chooses to dissolve this existing EDC and create an entirely new one, if it is a partnership model. There are risks on every single one of those, and I think the council really needs to weigh, what is the least risky path forward?
One more thought, and as I look at your timeline, what I see is, because part of it is at some point an ask of this body to reengage from a funding perspective in that timeline, you know, obviously, you've put a 10, October to March. I would guess, and that before this, well, again, I'll just make the comment that it would be, in my mind, if I was to personally be evaluating it, I would want to see, okay, let's see the new bylaws. I want to see that process unfold. I want to see it, and I want to see how best practices and strategic plans. So then, the ask comes, okay, now you've shown me, this is what you're going to do if you were to receive at least a signal that you, that that future conversation could be entertained. And then, again, if I'm the one-man approval team, that's when I would say, okay, it looks like you're now in that motion. So again, if I was to examine where we're at now and where we could be, it seems like that would have to take place before I could be in a position to say, let's really do this. I think that's what this is saying, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand, especially that fourth, where we say additional funding ask, that that, that's probably a little bit into the game.
Yes. So on the timeline there, again, these are, this is an aggressive schedule, but review and propose new bylaws, that would be done by 12:15. Review the best practices and strategic plan and make sure that we were in agreement on that by 12:15. So to develop the new PSA doesn't start till 12:15, and that runs through February 15th. Now, again, that, again, looking at that, so yes, you'd have those two bedrock pieces already accomplished on the front end before we'd even really begin starting the discussion about the PSA.
And I think that that will speak volumes to taking this conversation to something more concrete, and it gives, again, if I'm the one-man approval team, that would give me the ability to say yea or nay on a forward direction. So, there, I think that's what I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker?
All right. I'm sorry, Councilmember Little.
That's the worst insult. Best compliment to you, though. No, thank you. You know, I just, first of all, thank you all for committing your time here to come visit with us. You know, we've got some significant heavyweights of industry that have spent, you know, a lot of dollars, you know, from their corporations or businesses, invest in this community. So I just, I thank you guys for your willingness to do it. I always think of, you know, do you get it? Do you want it? And are you willing to do the work? And it seems like we've got a group, you know, people here that are committed to the city and moving it forward. And so, one of the things I, you know, as I look back at, you know, how this, you know, how we ended up here, there were significant challenges in leadership, and I think that was addressed. And so then it was like, you know, what is next? And as I think of bylaws, and I think of the PSA agreement and kind of working through that, I guess, you know, the question that we have, and I think, I do feel confident in this group to make sure this happens, is that maybe the board in the past wasn't aware of a lot of the things that were being requested. So we had leadership that kind of, you know, kind of had their hand-selected boards and were presenting the information, but maybe didn't know what all was expected from the PSA or what we were doing. So I think, you know, from my perspective, is, you know, just kind of understanding, how do we create the bylaws? How to create the PSA that ensures that, number one, we've got an executive leader, that we all understand the roles and responsibility of that? And then we have a board that holds them to account so that we don't end up in that position again. So I guess, and I would say this, too, like, understanding your positions and your businesses, you go through this all the time and know how to deal with those things. So how does this board help us get to a position where we feel that confidence that the board isn't just a bunch of buddies, that it is someone that will hold them to account, that encourages them, that moves them forward, that keeps them on the right path, and that we feel that comfort on that side, too? So I guess that would be my question, and maybe that's how you, you know, work through the bylaws and some of the PSA things, too, is to say, we have an active board that understands those. Everybody's represented and everybody's held accountable for the outcomes of the organization. And maybe we don't know those answers today, but I think that, wouldn't that be a priority in kind of setting this up? Because I believe that has been part of the frustration on, you know, on this end.
I think it absolutely is a priority. I would respectfully make one clarifying point to that, Councilmember Little, is that you had mentioned leadership has been addressed, and I would say it's not fully addressed until new leadership is in place. And to your point, and I think your point is incredibly well taken, new expectations, new controls, new reporting, new accountabilities are structured. So I think all of the things that you just said make perfect sense and would be, I think, priorities for us once that new leader is identified. And how we accomplish that in the meantime, I think we would need to work through that. But it won't fully be addressed until we have that new leader in place and those accountabilities and responsibilities are addressed.
I think that's it. I mean, I feel fully confident that this group of leaders could help take us to that, to that, in that direction, too. So, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. So as I was listening to all you guys kind of give your resumes and stuff, it's very, very impressive. So it made me start thinking, as far as the character of the LSEDC, do you guys, maybe you do, maybe I didn't hear about it, but I feel like, as I was listening to all you guys say, you know, I mean, you're very successful, it's impressive, but do, are you guys willing to do like a mentorship for startup companies wanting to come to our city and say, you know what? We're where we're at because of the experiences we've been through. You guys have lots of wisdom to share. I think that's pretty clear. But I feel like if I'm going to choose between a city that's got an EDC that's willing to wrap its arms around knowing the struggles of starting a new business or, you know, starting small and then growing it to what you guys have done, I would easily choose to come to you with where you guys are. So I don't know, do you, are you guys willing to be an EDC of character that's, you know what, yeah, we're busy, we're in high positions, we're, but you know what, we want the success of this city and to partner with people and to show them, here's where we went wrong, here's where you can do things different? I think it would speak volumes. So I don't know if that's something that you guys would be willing to do. I just, I think... I just, I think it would almost be a disservice if you didn't, because you have so much to share. But I'm just, I'm just curious what your guys' perspective on that would be. Again, I know it takes time, but are you, would you guys be willing to be an EDC that is willing to take the time, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yes. The answer is yes. And I'm saying that as a, as a part-owner of a new business as of January of this year, Inlee Summit, that my wife runs it today, thank goodness. But I've been doing this for 30 years, and I learned more about running a business in the last, what, nine, 10 months than the 30 years I've been doing commercial real estate and development. So, and I mean that seriously. I'm not, I'm smiling, but I'm being dead serious.
Why don't you share what it is?
No, I don't want to do a plug. No, I can't do that.
Everybody's dying to know in the public.
Oh, my wife says you're pushing me. So my wife, my wife and I own the, at least I'm a Jazzercise. Now, you know that, Mayor.
Is that still a thing?
It's still a thing. Yes, Dan, it's still a thing. No, I'm not an instructor. But my point is just, that whole process has just been amazing to me. And just think of how many, how many other small business people, and I have resources. I had people I was calling on to get help. And so, yeah, I mean, the answer is yes. I'm speaking for myself.
I would say absolutely. I think that, again, to your point, Councilwoman, there's a lot of business expertise here in Inlee Summit, and I think that it is one of the areas that we have not done a good job with, with business startups and that initial growth to get them into, through that second year, and then be a resource to them after that, as that business does hopefully take off and begin to grow, and you go through that pain. And how do I, how many FTE do I hire because I'm getting all the orders in, but my overhead goes up dramatically? And how do you work through those kind of things? And so, I mean, to me, I think it's a great idea. It's not something that I think that we've had a lot of discussion about, but I think it's a good one that I think ought to be on the table as we talk about what we do as an EDO and what we do in this community going forward.
And one of the things that we do is support small business. John Knox Village, I was going to say dozens, but we probably have hundreds of subcontractors, small businesses, lease summit businesses, that we interact with, that we engage, that we hire for projects and come alongside them, they come alongside us, we partner, we learn from each other. But it's a multiplier effect. When you have a large business and organization, you are dependent upon hundreds of others to help you in the effort.
I just asked Tom, obviously, we're both bankers, we're competitors, but we're also friends. I asked him how long he'd been, I thought we were. I asked him how long he'd been in banking. He's been in banking 41 years. I have 43 years. So, you know, we have, do the math, 84 years combined. So we have, I think there's been a lot of deals for existing businesses or startups that have come across our desk. So I think, as members of this organization, Tom would be more than happy to guide talking to startups. So, no, I'm teasing. I think there's some expertise between the two of us or future bankers that come along. I think that's a great idea. I think we would accept that with open arms.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, I told Mayor Tim Lopez he could be next. And then Councilmember.
Councilmember Lovell brought up the PSA. In the last PSA, it was very important to us to have benchmarks. So, and I just jotted some notes down, number of new businesses the EDC would bring, number of jobs, average wages for those jobs. And those would be, I assume, Mayor, those would be, the council would put the benchmarks in, or at least have a say in what the benchmarks would be in the PSA.
I think everything's, needs to be discussed amongst us, because, you know, it's a two-way agreement.
Yeah.
Everything needs to be reasonable and pragmatic and.
Right.
You know, benchmarks are very difficult, because it depends on what the economy's like.
Yeah, okay.
And we've had talks about benchmarks in, over the years, and what's fair and what's I'm more concerned about the relationship, you know, and how do you incorporate that into a PSA? And how do you incorporate it into the bylaws, like I've been taking notes on? So, but there have to be, there has to be return on investment. We learned that in all the best practices, every single one we've done, not just these, but the ones from past years that we've done with the EDC, with the Visitors Bureau, there have to be benchmarks. Everything has to, we have to try to quantify what the return on investment is, and we're being effective.
Okay. I was going to say, you just killed my question, but I think I found the way right. I guess my question would be, what do you all think would be fair benchmarks? And what do you see? Because I heard somebody say something about, sometimes economic development is soft, and you don't really, you can't really quantify it. So how would you see those benchmarks being laid out?
Yeah, so I said that. And I think if you go back to the best practices report, there was a survey referenced from 2013, where there was an interview or a survey of 500 ED, or I'm sorry, yeah, economic development organizations. And of those at the time, 30% had hard quantitative metrics. So I think, to be fair, this is an incredibly difficult, you know, thing to measure. It's difficult than, it's more difficult than a public works, it's more difficult than a response time for fire or police or any of those things. I do think it is a collaborative development process. I do think it has to do with, if it's, what is the tax base doing? What are the number of new jobs that are created? What is the return on investment of incentives? How many incentives? How many new businesses? I don't know that there is a perfect sort of dashboard of metrics that are out there, but I agree with the mayor that we have to have agreed-upon metrics and agreed-upon targets that we are driving towards. There are a lot of variables. One that rocked my world was COVID, and all of my benchmarks went out the window during that time. And so, you know, recessions happen, and government shutdowns happen, and changes in administrations happen, and all of those things impacted. And so I think there needs to be grace given, and it's appropriate to give grace at both times. But I think by and large, that's right. We do need to come up with a good blend of objective, hard, and a bit softer criteria as well, too. So that's, and that's one person's perspective on this.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Can Dan and I get a discount for Jazzercise?
Talk to you afterwards. I don't even know what it is.
Thought I'd throw a plug in there, too. I don't know, there's a lot more that I can say than what my colleagues have already stated. I think we can beat a dead horse to death here. But first of all, thank you, guys, all of you. I think at one point in my career, as a banker or as a commercial real estate developer, I think I've worked with most of you in some capacity, but really, thank you very much for being here. And as Councilmember Lovell said, I have the utmost respect for each one of you. So your careers are, just speak for themselves. So thank you, guys. With that being said, I wish we really would have had this discussion 18 months ago. And I won't go back, I won't go backwards, but the dialogue we had right before this session with the Planning Commission, the mayor's led those initiatives the last five and a half years of this full, embracing, collaborative environment. And we just haven't gotten there, not with this group. And whatever, that's as far back as I'll go. Path going forward, I would agree, again, I won't repeat what's been stated already. I think, as Councilmember Felker said, and Councilmember Lovell, we just want that reassurance. You know, I'm looking at the strategic plan here that the ADI, ADI Addy Group put together. I was part of that process, and a few of us on the council were. But, you know, it talks about reimagined. Those are the words we need to use, reimagined. We can't, can't just do the status quo. I've been on other regional EDCs as well throughout the metro area, and there's something about this one here in Lee Summit, there's something about this community, period. I don't think it's luck. As the mayor said earlier, there's been a lot of forefathers that have held your roles before with EDC, with the chamber, on this council, the mayor's staff. Can't ignore staff. And there's a reason why we're having this success. It's not luck. And I think there has been a lot of really good decisions, but I think we got complacent. And we really have to think broader than that. And I think that's what this body's asking for. We can't have the same old, static way of doing things. And again, I wish we would have had this discussion so we wouldn't be in this situation. But I think we can grow and become very, much more stronger if we get it right. So I hope after tonight, obviously, we, I think the mayor wants us to discuss this further, but I hope after tonight, there is some kind of real commitment. I know you all have been here 84 years, but I think there's.
Do not. Collective.
Collective, collective. No, but I really do hope we can take this and not just talk, because we talked about 60% of your revenue is private-funded. The city, the people we represent, is the highest investor. And I know that's why we're here. I get that. But we have to be good stewards of these funds also, and that's why it's super important for us to get it right. And we don't want to be back here in 18 months to do this over again. I don't. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I cut you off earlier. Do you want to?
We're always willing to come.
Would you like to make any further comment?
Sure. I feel like the consensus of the council is probably a different place than where I'm at, which is fine. But I look at this and I see basically asking to keep doing what we were doing, that there'll be, review the bylaws, look at the best practices, but just put in a new PSA, put in a new director, continue with this organization, start the funding up again. And I just, I don't know why things would be different this time, because this has been kind of pointed out, a lot of the things that are being talked about tonight are things that could have happened in the organization as it was currently constituted. And I feel like, obviously, when someone's going to come here for this meeting, they're going to say, oh, yeah, everything's going to be different this time. Everything's going to get fixed. And I don't, I don't want to go back to the past, like, that's, I'm not really interested in digging into all that. I'm just looking towards the future and saying, if you keep doing the same thing and expecting different results, that's kind of crazy. So, I mean, I see, okay, there's already a 501(c)(4) status, there's some money in the treasury. I don't know what the state of these relationships are since the, you know, prior staff is all gone at this point. And it sounds like there's still businesses who are, you know, members, but I don't really know how deep that commitment is since, you know, everything's been kind of on pause. So I don't think anything would change our commitment to economic development. I think that, one way or the other, we're going to move forward, making sure that's a priority for the city. I just don't know if this organization is the one to lead that effort. And that there's a lot of, again, not to dwell on it, but a lot of broken trust and broken contracts. And I haven't really heard anything that convinces me that it really would be different going forward. So I'm totally fine if that's not the consensus. We want to try and move down this path, and hopefully, we can do that productively, but I retain that skepticism.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember.
Have we moved on to council comments?
No.
Okay.
I mean, yes, you can, you can make comments about this. Not, we haven't moved past the discussion, but if you want to make comments and save your comments for council comments, then yes, we, there will be time to do that, so they can speak more freely. Council comments are council comments. But if there's anything you want to say now, while we're in front of the board, then this is, this is, would be the time to do it. I mean, I always, I, this is the way I do it. I let everybody speak so that it doesn't come across as me steering. I'm pretty consistent that way. So I'm trying to let them speak before I make any comments. I mean, I'm taking meticulous notes. I can, I can add to the conversation, but I want to make sure that council members have the opportunity to ask their questions and make any comments they want while you're here, so. So you can either save it for later, or you can.
So good, I may just wait.
Okay.
I just had a quick question. I know that when we were going through this process over the last 18 months, one of the main words that kept coming up was accountability. And a lot of it was, we questioned, and many others questioned, why were the, and again, I don't mean to go to the past, but I just wanted to see how you guys see it in the future. We would question why Board of Directors were not holding the chair accountable, in our view, or I'll speak for myself, it showed a lack of leadership, which I know you guys don't lack that. So it made me question personally, why are they not holding this person accountable? You guys would not probably run your businesses that way and allow that to happen in your business, so why was it being allowed to happen at the EDC level? So I guess my question is, you know, what would accountability look like? Would it be present and prevalent in the new EDC you guys are speaking of? And how would you hold each other accountable to say, hey, we, this, we, something's not going the way we need it to go, and it goes to the top? How are we going to handle this? And actually speak out, instead of it coming to us saying, you aren't doing this, and it questions your character as far as EDC goes?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Hodges, those are all incredibly fair points. And I think as a responsible board, we have to take accountability and acknowledge that that accountability for the management of the organization was not there. I don't know all the reasons for that, and I'm not sure if it's constructive to go back and dig up those reasons. I do think, as we think about governance documents, I know my organization's governance documents set expectations for me and set accountabilities to the board, and I think that's a pretty consistent and common attribute of governing documents, at least for the chief executive. I don't know that they did that well enough or strongly enough, or, and ultimately, it's the board's responsibility for doing that. And so, at the end of the day, whether that governing document referenced those clearly enough or not, is sort of beside the point. We, as a board, did not hold that accountability. I think, you know, this entire process, and I will say, from middle of '22, when the PSA, it was a wake-up call, I'll just be, for myself, and I think for others, it was a wake-up call, like, this is real serious. And it shouldn't have taken that, because I remember standing in front of this dais in 2021, making a pitch for the organization to have the PSA. And I'll be honest, at that time, I.
I'm not sure.
I appreciated exactly where the council was at that point. I'm pretty crystal clear where you guys are now. I can guarantee you that, and I'd be shocked if everybody on this side of the table wasn't. And so, you know.
While painful, and I think, I think the last 18 months or so have been really important and eye-opening for us as a board. And so I think Councilmember Shields has fair points. You know, I mean, you know, we're standing up here giving you our word. I will tell you, my days are long, and I've contributed a lot of time and hours to this organization over the last 18 months, for my family, time away from my organization. And it is because I believe in the city and I believe in what the city can do in terms of economic development. If I didn't care, I wouldn't be here. I think I speak for everybody here that that's our commitment. If we didn't care, we wouldn't be here. And so, I, there, we did not, we did not live up to our accountability to holding the leadership as accountable as they should have been, and we were asleep at the wheel as a board. And sure that that took place.
Your honesty.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thanks, Mayor. So, you know, I'll just say, I think, well, a couple things. Just my personal experience with the EDC, and Councilmember Hodges had mentioned something about, you know, kind of embracing startups or new businesses. I can remember when I joined in 2017. I had recently launched my agency. You know, I, and it was a significant investment to join the EDC, but man, I got a front-row seat to some of the brightest business minds out there. And so, like many organizations, what you get is what, kind of what you put in. And some of the best relationships that I have, whether it was meeting. And some of the best relationships that I have, whether it was meeting fellow council members, my involvement with the city, just so much happened. And so I just, you know, as someone that's been actively involved in this type of an organization, I can tell you it is a force multiplier in your business, in your involvement in the community, in this ability to meet and learn. And honestly, it's probably like, one of the most important things that EDC can do is really embracing that business community. And I mean, it was vibrant. It was. I mean, there were happy hours, there were lunches, there were, there was no shortage of opportunities to get involved and do things. And so, you know, we obviously went through COVID, we, we had a downfall, we've, we've got, we have this opportunity with a lot of active investors, my business included. Do we throw those all out and then say, we as a body are better off going out and finding a brand-new board, a brand-new organization, and, and saying, go out and try to find new investors, and it gets relaunched? I think, I think it would, when you talk about least risky option, I think that is a far riskier option in alienating so many businesses that have been involved, that have stayed, you know, have said, we're still committed, and we're just, we're going to wait this out because we trust you guys. We trust you guys that you're going to do what's right. And now we have this opportunity to say, here's the framework, we're all in agreement on the framework, we've got great leaders that have said, I'll raise my hand, I'll step away from my huge business, and I will come here and I will commit to pushing this thing forward and getting it right. We have a chance to hire new leadership, and we have a chance to revitalize this thing, you know, raise it from the dead and move it forward better than it ever was, and we will have the accountability measures in place, say, hey, guys, it ain't working, right? And then we, then we've got to either, you know, find new leaders, find new board members, whatever that might be. So I just, you know, I just think we can overcomplicate this thing. We just have to set, like, here are the things we're going to do, we're going to have input in it, you guys are going to have input in it, the business leaders are going to have input in it, the chamber's going to have input in it, the staff is going to have input in it. We've got the framework, and we've got the people. And so I think, you know, from my perspective, it is, it's, let's get this thing moving. And, and let's, let's start putting some action behind the words. Let's get this thing, we've sat on the sidelines far too long. And you know what? We're going to take some responsibility from that on, on the council side, too. So I feel like, you know, there's some responsibility on our end for what hasn't happened over the last, you know, year or so. But I just, you know, I want to see us move forward with this group, I want to see us create these, you know, and I think of benchmarks, too. It's very hard to measure, you know, what the EDC is directly accountable for. But what you can do is you can measure a lot of, a lot of different things that are going on, like, how many new businesses came to Lee Summit? What industry were they in? Oh, gosh, we're having success there. Now what do we do with it? So that's how you create action, and you can go out and target certain industries, you can, there's just so much more that you can do with that. And I think that's what we've always been wanting, right, from the EDCs? Instead of just like, $200 million in new construction, you know, and an annual meeting every year, it's like, no, here's what we're seeing. Here's the areas that we can do that, and that collaborative effort, that we can actually put some action behind those benchmarks, those metrics, and a new PSA that really just sets the tone moving forward and kind of projects us out into the future to have the strongest EDC in the area, more so than just Eastern Jackson County. Because it was. I mean, it was, man, this thing was humming and strumming back in the day. And I think we can get there, and I think we've got the right people, and you got my full support. And I hope that's something, you know, as a council, we can, we can come to, come to agreement on and, and take what we have, a great foundation, great members, and, and get this thing going again.
All right, thank you. You haven't said much, but Well, I'll try to, I mean, the board's already heard my opinion for the last few years. But I, I agree with everything you said. I don't, you've not said one thing I've disagreed with. I agree with everything you said. Not, I mean, it's just like, like Councilmember Hodges said, you guys are, you bring so much to the table. There are things that I don't agree with. I definitely, I know that we meet with the parks and board, we meet with the planning commission, board, you know, it's a board, we meet with the school board, because this is peer-to-peer. We have the same job. We hold one person accountable, and that's the city manager, Mark Dunning. And that's what your board needs, supposed to do. And yet, we've had a really difficult time. And, you know, when I, when I, when I hear all these wonderful things being said, I mean, it sounds great. You know, they're all the values that I share. The things that I disagree with are things like the errors that, that we've been trying to fix this for the last 14 months. I, I feel like it's been really hard. I've, I've put my time in, too, on this. And so I'm really, if I'd had this to work with, we wouldn't be sitting here. If I were on the board with this type of collaborative accountability. I truly, I feel that the key is, I just wonder if you can admit that, yes, we had an operational leadership problem, but we also have had a board leadership problem because whoever I'm sitting across from, and right now, that would be you, because you're the vice chair of the dais, there has to be a relationship there, a cooperative, collaborative relationship. And I haven't had that in a long time. It has been really rough. So that's number one. I think every single item we've talked about is negotiable. There's always middle ground, but there's some things that just, just, if you guys can't address them, then I guess we would have to just go through the higher-risk path and pursue that. So, the ball's in both of our courts, but we've never been able to get, I, I'm, I'm in, I like negotiating. I like finding the path, the middle ground. But there are certain things that have to be in place. I can think of all kinds of things. I've heard a lot of things as far as the bylaws. I like a lot of the ideas I heard. I can think of ways to empower the board more. I can think of ways to empower the board to hold itself accountable. But it's really easy for us. We've got a couple of attorneys right there that are phenomenal. And you heard us tonight in the planning commission say, when we start getting off the right path, what should we do? And basically, the attorney said, you need to take a recess, and then we need to talk before you get us in trouble, right? So we have that kind of expertise in the room, and there's ways to incorporate that. In the old days, like Councilmember Felker said, you had Carl Chinnery in the room to make sure that you stayed in line. And he helped provide that kind of accountability. There are ways to incorporate that kind of accountability. I just, I'm just, I just don't agree that we've tried to move forward the last 14 months, given, didn't move forward, and then you, and it's hard to believe because of the talent that's sitting in front of us. So you guys see where I'm going with this? We need, we need leadership that's willing to work with us and meet. It's been a huge obstacle, in my opinion. We all disagree. You guys be willing to meet in the middle on that?
Mayor, I'd say that, speaking for myself, and not for everyone up there, that we would. You know, I kind of look at the last 14 months, we've kind of been in just and doing every, we think we can as stewards of the money that's in the bank to preserve as much of it as possible, but still do as much service as we can with the limited scale we have. But I think that all of us that are here are committed to moving forward, or we wouldn't be here. You know, if I needed to resign, I could resign right now. If you guys don't want me involved anymore, I'm fine with resigning. But, but that's, I think that if you want
The problem with that is, is it's been said many times before, but then it didn't happen. So I, and I don't want to go into that. I'm just saying, is it on the table? You say reconstitute the board. Can we make sure that we, if we were to move forward with this, that we would put together a board that would want to work with us? You don't represent, you, there's, there's only seven of you here, and there's 14 members, right? And it should be 18 members. And a couple of them, I guess, are here. The city manager. That, that, that has to be on the table, to figure out, to figure out how to, how to move forward. And to be honest, I'd, I'd love to work with all of you in some capacity, but whoever's sitting across from me and this council that's, that's going to help us get through this, it can't be what I've gone through the last two years. It just, it won't work.
Understood.
But I love everything else you guys have said, and I appreciate it. I think the council members, I didn't disagree with anything they said. Not even the council member that showed her dissent. I mean, I, I'm with her, too. You, you're with her, too. You get it. So I think this was, when we leave here tonight, we're going to say, that was a great night. This is what economic development should be about, is us meeting, except we're talking about how we're going to do things together in great ways. So I can leave it to council. I mean, I need their consent to move in any direction. But I definitely need to know that you all are really open to fixing all these wonderful, all these great ideas. I mean, I've written down everything, and plus, this is on video. I'm the type to go replay it and watch it over and over again, remember exactly what was said, and then bring it right back, you know, to this council and to you all. So if you're all sincere, then there's always a way. I, I, I know that. So that's, is that, is that fair? Bill, and then Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just kind of reflect a couple of things. One was, one is that I've had the opportunity to talk with most of you across the table from me and some others who aren't here tonight about this kind of meeting. And I heard a constant reply was, this is, would be something you wanted. So I'm grateful that we're having it, Mayor. Thank you for, for calling this meeting. And I think, yes, this is the kind of engagement that I think leads to the kind of results that I think we all believe in or all want. I do think, what I've heard, again, reflecting what was said to me, and I think what Mr. Van Bussen just said, was, okay, well, I'm reflecting what was said to me. So I'll just say what I've heard, and I'll then speak that I, my sense, from the council perspective, is, yes, we were engaging in a series of processes to figure out what to do. And so what I heard was that there was a wait-and-see. And so then, when the, when the C came, meaning when we came with a direction, the consultant with the direction, it was to not include them in that direction. And that, again, was
I think that whoever said that, needs to, needs to step up and say
No, no, no. So what I'm saying is that the direction that the consultant provided did not include engaging with this board. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying this, and, and so when that was heard, then the desire to say, well, where are we at in the, on the table in terms of negotiating table, and was as if the consultant was saying that they are not on the table. And that's part of why I raised the question when we met as a council two or three weeks ago, was, well, why, that's why I asked the consultant, why weren't we not engaging with an existing EDC that has all of the process in place, in the sense of having an organization that has 501(c)(4) already in place? That process alone usually takes nine months from start to finish. You, you put the application in, it's nine months before the IRS responds with an approval. And if you get the approval the first time, which you probably would if we did a new organization. So, so I, I'm, I'm not trying to relitigate things. I think my, my point is, I think this conversation reflects where I think we want to go. I think that, I view this as a good faith effort to say, we want to give this a go, that we've been waiting, and now we, we're looking to see if you, council, will give us a green light in an abbreviated timeframe, two months, is what you're saying here, less than that. That you all would go to work and say, we're going to craft something for you as council to look at and review, and we'd love to come to you, council, and say, we've got what we think is the framework for moving forward in a really positive direction. I'm supportive of that. I'm supportive of giving that opportunity to this body. And yes, encouraging you to examine your, the vacancies on the board, how do you fill them? Could you fill them now? Could you fill them with someone who could come help in that process? I don't know. What are you going to do to engage, you know, legal counsel to help you make sure your bylaws really are the best thing? I think that's a wise thing. I'll also just say, from my perspective, I was also in the wait-and-see mode. And so if I were to say, what I discovered over the last month is, I had not engaged with each of you. So shame on me for not reaching out to you to say, we've got an economic development problem, and as a council member, I did not, aside from showing up at an event or two, coming and going, did I actually sit and talk to you all about what really mattered to you and perhaps what mattered to me? I didn't do it. And so I've had those conversations more now, and that's been helpful to me. It's been helpful for me to hear the perspective of board members, and it's educated me in, in my responsibilities. Because I'm no economic development expert. I don't, won't ever claim to be. But I care about our community, and I want it to be the best it can be. And so, so I, Mayor, if I'm to give my, I'd support moving forward. There are still checkpoints in here that would, would give this council the ability to say, sorry, that's not where we want to be. But I would think we're, I'm giving my opinion that this would allow them to, to give a go at that in the timeframe they've provided. Thank you.
Okay. I, I appreciate everything Councilmember Felker said. I'm going to let, let it go, the whole painting of, a picture of how this went down the last 14 months. It is what it is. Do we want to move forward? Are all these items negotiable, like you've mentioned tonight? Those are, those are the things that are important. I don't want to be told that, well, it's fine. I'm going to let that go. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd just like to agree with Councilmember Shields. I mean, I don't see anything on here that is new, really. I mean, you're really just reworking the bylaws, hiring somebody new. You say the new bylaws will hold you accountable. I don't know how, how the old bylaws weren't holding you accountable. And Mayor, we keep talking about the last 14 months. You know, some of us have been on here longer than 14 months. And I was always shocked when the economic development director would come and give council reports, or we'd talk about the PSA, and nobody on the board would be here. And there have been multiple discussions beyond 14 months where nobody from EDC was participating. So I don't see how that's going to change. At this point, I would like to continue on our path with our exploratory committee and see how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. Is it on?
No.
No?
The gray button, no.
I feel like, I feel like every, I feel like all of you guys have, I feel like this was a massive wake-up call over the last 14 months. I know me, as a council member, looking back, there were obviously things, I could have just as easily have reached out to any of you guys as you guys could have me. I feel like going forward, I would like to continue these conversations personally. If we do an exploratory committee, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, but I would like to continue these conversations. I think it's important that, that, I, not only the mayor is engaging with you guys, but just that the communication is open. I think we're, we're going to be hard-pressed to find any board with as much talent as I'm seeing in front of me right here. And if we do go a different direction, I have a strong feeling that a lot of you guys would end up on that board anyway, especially, I mean, at least some of the medical center Especially, I mean, Lee Summit Medical Center, the CEO, St. Luke's East, the CEO, John Knox Village, the CEO, they're going to end up, I feel like, on that new EDC anyway. So I think, in my personal opinion, the best path forward is going what's already currently in place. I would like to see maybe more, a more diverse board as far as businesses go. Possibly incorporating even more smaller businesses as to Councilmember Hodges, kind of what she said. Just different backgrounds, different thought processes, different, even places where they are. Not necessarily all CEOs or all heads of an organization, but just a more diverse board. But I don't think, and my opinion is changing. After seeing you guys and hearing you guys, I truly think that you guys have had the wake-up call that you've needed to know that we can't keep doing what we were doing and expecting different results. We, it's time that we change what we're doing to expect new results. And I think that you guys understand that. And I think that I truly believe you guys when you guys say that. As far as the exploratory committee, I'm pretty neutral on what we do going forward on that. But I do think that we have a lot of talent here. And one thing I would like to see though is, I, as far as the chamber goes, there's so much talent, like, we have an awesome chamber within Lee Summit and I would like to see that collaboration continue or not even continue. I don't know that it was ever there. But I would like to see the collaboration between the chamber and downtown Lee Summit Main Street as to kind of what you had said earlier. I think that that's super important, that collaboration and that trust is there. And I think that with time, that trust will be built. I don't think that it might necessarily be there right now, but I do think that with time, it will be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming. I haven't had a lot to say because I have, I've watched everything happen. Everything tumble, everything be revived, everything tumble. I do not like the phrase 14 months. Every time I hear that, that sets me back because this has been going on a lot longer than 14 months. Been going on for more than 24 months. And by my count, there were four times that this council, whatever makeup of the council, there were four times that we brought up accountability issues. Four times, nothing changed. And the reference to the 2021 meeting, that was a pretty fired-up meeting. And anybody that was here, I don't remember who was here. I remember two members that were here, two. If I was, if I was over here and not up here, I would have said, we need to change. Go back right now and change because it was pretty fired up. And I would say, go back and listen. Because if that wasn't a wake-up call, I don't know what was. But again, you know, I feel like changing the bylaws, I don't know what's wrong with the bylaws, but I wonder why they, why that process hasn't started before now. I think that's a good idea, but it's, I'm going to use my own phrase that I don't like to use, why didn't it start 13 months ago? If there was an, if it was identified that there was something wrong, you know, I wish, I wish that would have happened 13 months ago. And I appreciate it, but I feel like it's being done for us rather than, rather than the whole of the board. You know, at that time, you know, anybody can make an excuse and be forgiven and we move on. But this is, this is something that, there's a lot of money at stake. And we never got any result for the amount of money we spent before. And I just feel like there is a, there's an intent, but is it a true intent? Or after the discussions, I think things would get better. But we, you know, this has just been going on. And the reference to we can do better, I appreciate that too. I appreciate everything that's said. I agree with a lot of it. But it comes down to excuses. Who's responsible? Who's going to be responsible? And it troubles me. It really does. So I, I'm not convinced, I'll tell you, I'm not convinced. I'm just, I've been through this too long and it just, excuses were made before and we were all going to do better. It never happened. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I was there that night and I remember it vividly. And I think there is a difference though. I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative with Councilmember Demoral because he's been here longer than I have. But I feel like this is, you guys are super genuine, super sincere. That was going to be a big question I had tonight just because our board meetings haven't gone very well and, you know. I'm definitely not a hard no. I'm, I feel like last year, I've always been ready to move in a direction. So I'm going to take the council, I'm going to talk to them. But I really think, really wanting to move forward, we would need to, you know, I, there needs to be more than just us going and making a decision. No more waiting, you know, for us to make a decision. Like, we've got to keep engaging after this. And I think that that's key for me to be able to take it back to council. I don't want to drag you back in here again. I think that this night is, I said earlier, these types of meetings are symbolic and I mean that. I think this means a lot. You guys sitting across from us and... Truly, I truly appreciate that night. I think we can get further if we have some one-to-one conversations. Feel free to talk to any of these council members, any of you. I do think, I don't believe in bottlenecks. I don't believe it's healthy for me to be the only communicator to the council. I've never believed that. It wasn't that good, it wasn't good, it's not good. For the city manager, he gives us opportunities to talk to department heads. He doesn't force every single thing right down there so that we can develop relationships. So I think that what I'm going to do is let anybody make any final comments and then we'll, we'll take a break and then I'll let them do council comments if they can have anything left to say, let them say that. But I do want you to know that I do feel this is different than May of '21, I think it was. Because you've just, you put your hearts on the table and I heard a lot of things that I want, I want really bad. I want, I want this, what you guys said tonight. That's what I want. That's all I ever wanted. I do want to get into the details of the bylaws and the, and things like that, but, and I have opinions on that, but... I'll have to discuss that with council and it'll help if we can continue talking. They could tell me after you guys leave that they're done and that, but I don't. But I can tell you this, they're impatient, just like you all want to move forward. They're impatient, they want to move forward in one direction or another. So we will be making some decisions. Don't need to do a best practices guy recommended. We don't need to do that.
It's a 12-month process.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, no. So I'll let, I'll let council or any of you make any last comments. But you're, you are amazing people, doing great things in our community. There's a lot of firepower between jobs, between what you do for our communities. We're a healthcare, in all respects. The loans you give help put dollars into the economy. And developments that you guys work on are critical to our future health and success. So one way or another, we have to figure out how to work together, whether it's with this, a new EDO and then we go get you all and start over again or probably would run from us at one point, but we're about to run from you too. So this is not easy for any of us. Mr. Dunning, you want to add anything tonight before I?
Things I would add, I totally agree with the EDO best practices report that we had. And I'm wired to think that that, to your point, Mr. Rexroth, let's not overcomplicate things, right? And in many ways, I've heard a lot of discussion, rightfully so, about accountability and performance and things like that. And in my mind, we all hold each other accountable, right? That's what we do. That's what we should do. And in many ways, I think if we think through those four common functions of an EDO and eight common success factors and we think through who's doing this well, and it's not just the city or the EDC, let's bring the chamber into the discussion. Let's bring our new DMO into the discussion and we start to create ownership, right? We all own this, but let's understand our roles, responsibilities, who's owning it, who's accountable for it, who's tracking it, who's reporting on it? How are we all working together to make this place what we want it to be? So great discussion tonight. I very much appreciate it, just like the council members have shared. I value my time on the EDC, the short time that I've spent there. So thank you for that and those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thank you. When we get a future executive director for this whatever organization, we need someone that can communicate as well as that guy. Makes life a lot easier. And you're the one that said that in the last board meeting. Or you at least were alluding to that fact. So I think we all want the same, like I said. So I think I'll take a break unless anybody has any last comment. All right, if you stick around, shake some hands and let you guys go home to your families. I'm sorry to keep you so late. We'll take a 10-minute recess, or a five-minute recess. We'll take a 10-minute recess, or a five-minute recess.
Yeah. That's sort of cute. Like... Welcome back, everyone. What another wild ride we have had. It's been a couple of months of serious, intense discussions from all kinds of, on all kinds of agenda items. Although this one's actually my favorite, even though that wasn't the most fun conversation. There were times it was fun, but we just need to figure out a path. We don't really have anything other than a few other items, and we'll be out of here. But start with committee reports.
All right. Council comments.
Yeah, I've been watching Taylor Swift. Yes, Councilmember Shields.
I'm going to say something completely unrelated to the entire discussion that we just had. I am super, super excited that we are having the groundbreaking for the downtown farmer's market plaza next week before the council meeting. And this has been a long, long, long time coming. And I know we're sure everybody here is going to be there. It's a huge milestone for the city. And I can't wait.
4:30.
4:30 next Tuesday, across the street.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, council comments. You don't have to make any comment about the meeting we just had, other than we have to probably put some, I mean, I don't know, I got to come up with a plan. And I would like to, we're supposed to do everything in the most public way possible, which means right here in this room, out, you know, in the open. But sometimes, you know, it's just like I was telling the board, if they would just, you know, if there's communication back and forth, then we can figure out problems. And that's what you were trying to say, I think, is trying to get perspective. So, we need to get some perspective over the next week. I'll talk to Mr. Dunning about if we put something on the agenda next week, have a discussion to let this sink in tonight. Because, you know, certain things will get said, and then you wake up the next day and you feel different about it than you did tonight. Or, you know, you know, it's really funny, I have a rule in real estate. I'm like, I let people know, you're never going to get an email or a phone call from me at night, because I'm not going to ruin your night, I want you to sleep on it, I want you to wake up in the morning, and then you're going to make a good decision. So, I think this is probably something we need to all sleep on and dig deep on, as far as what path do we want to go. And then we just hash it out. Might not agree, but we got to do it in public. So, we can form opinions behind the scenes, but, you know, we're going to have to discuss this and go on record as to the direction we want to go, because I have to, I have to figure out how to work with the board, and I have to follow your guidance. I mean, I'm the liaison to this board. I do have opinions, but I will always do what the council wants. And we got to figure out what is the will of this council. Councilmember Prior, you want to make some comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm more excited now than ever. Kansas City in general is experiencing a lot of growth, but I feel like Lee Summit just has such a bright future ahead with so much growth and so much, so much coming our way, that I'm just really excited to be on council, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. And I hope that, and especially after hearing the EDC, LS EDC board tonight, I feel like they share the enthusiasm, and it's just fun, it's just a fun time to be a part of all of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, I'll say again, I know I said it when we were in the middle of the conversation, but thank you for inviting the EDC board to meet with us. Appreciate this opportunity to have that dialogue with them, and really hopefully bring some things to a head and help us find some direction with the future of economic development and Lee Summit.
I will reciprocate and say thank you to you, because I think it was a big part of, you know, what you came to me with. And I'm sincere when I, you know, I think, say that I think that that's a good thing. It was good to hear him out. It was a good idea.
Thanks.
Yep. I think we would regret it if we would have gone a different, even if we did go a different direction, we would regret not having this night. All right. Looking around. It's hard. I don't have a computer telling me who wants to talk. So, then I will go to staff roundtable.
Just two quick things, Mayor. I mentioned it last week as well, but Career Fair, the city's Career Fair tomorrow at Gammer Center between 2:00 and 7:00. Encourage anybody interested in careers in local government to stop by any time. That's kind of an open house format, and will create exposure to opportunities here with the city. And then, you may recall, Joe Lee Fisher and Beth Morano came and did a presentation to the council about use of opioid settlement funding. And wanted to let you know, I'll call it the revamped Enhanced Safe Passage Program. The information's out there that does include inpatient treatment centers and kind of those additional wraparound services that will look to bring that opioid settlement money to good use. So, you'll start seeing more information come out about that enhanced program with the Safe Passage Program. So, really encouraged and excited about those opportunities that present to us.
Would you, could you have, can we get something on, so I saw this pamphlet on my, in my inbox, and it's, I was like, whoa, what in the world? This is so great. This is so cool. I mean, if you read that pamphlet, it is impressive. And I would love for everybody to have the pamphlet.
You betcha.
And know about this, because that, I mean, it...
Mail slots.
You guys see it?
We've got it.
Okay, good. Because that is, that is something, to see that you can get help. And they'll take, they'll take whatever you got, and they'll destroy it, and you won't, and they'll help you, as in, you know, paraphernalia and drugs and all that good stuff. So, it's a great, it's a great thing, is it not? Deputy Chief?
Sorry, John. He looked right at you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
You bet.
All right. What time is it? 9:55. This meeting's adjourned.
Sorry, love. When you said please...[331.54]
Yeah, I've been watching Taylor Swift.
I'm going to say something completely unrelated to the entire discussion that we just had. I am super, super excited that we are having the groundbreaking for the downtown farmer's market plaza next week before the council meeting. And this has been a long, long, long time coming, and I know we're sure everybody here is going to be there. It's a huge milestone for the city, and I can't wait.
4:30.
4:30 next Tuesday, across the street.
You don't have to make any comment about the meeting we just had, other than we have to probably put something, I mean, I don't know, I've got to come up with a plan. And I would like to, we're supposed to do everything in the most public way possible, which means right here in this room, out, you know, in the open. But sometimes, you know, it's just like I was telling the board, if they would just, you know, if there's communication back and forth, then we can figure out problems. That's what you were trying to say, I think, is trying to get perspective. So we need to get some perspective over the next week. I'll talk to Mr. Dunning about if we put something on the agenda next week, have a discussion to let this sink in tonight. Because, you know, certain things will get said, and then you wake up the next day and you feel different about it than you did tonight. You know, it's really funny, I have a rule in real estate, I'm like, I let people know, you're never going to get an email or a phone call from me at night, because I'm not going to ruin your night, I want you to sleep on it, I want you to wake up in the morning, and then you're going to make a good decision. So I think this is probably something we need to all sleep on and dig deep on, as far as what path do we want to go, and then we just hash it out. Might not agree, but we've got to do it in public. So we can form opinions behind the scenes, but, you know, we're going to have to discuss this and go on record as to the direction we want to go, because I have to figure out how to work with the board, and I have to follow your guidance. I mean, I'm the liaison to this board. I do have opinions, but I will always do what the council wants. But we've got to figure out what is the will of this council. Councilmember Prior, you want to make some comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm more excited now than ever. Kansas City in general is experiencing a lot of growth, but I feel like Lee Summit just has such a bright future ahead with so much growth and so much coming our way that I'm just really excited to be on council, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. And I hope that, and especially after hearing the EDC, LSEDC board tonight, I feel like they share the enthusiasm, and it's just a fun time to be a part of all of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, I'll say again, I know I said it when we were in the middle of the conversation, but thank you for inviting the EDC board to meet with us. Appreciate this opportunity to have that dialogue with them, and really hopefully bring some things to a head and help us find some direction with the future of economic development at Lee Summit.
I will reciprocate and say thank you to you, because I think it was a big part of, you know, what you came to me with. And I'm sincere when I, you know, I think, say that I think that's a good thing. It was good to hear him out, it was a good idea.
Thanks.
Yep. I think we would regret it if we would have gone a different, even if we did go a different direction, we would regret not having this night. All right, looking around, it's hard, I don't have a computer telling me who wants to talk. Then I will go to staff roundtable.
Just two quick things, Mayor. I mentioned it last week as well, but Career Fair, the city's Career Fair tomorrow at Gamber Center between 2 o'clock and 7 o'clock. Encourage anybody interested in careers in local government to stop by any time. That's kind of an open house format, and will create exposure to opportunities here with the city. And then, you may recall, Jolie Fisher and Beth Morano came and did a presentation to the council about use of opioid settlement funding. And wanted to let you know, I'll call it the revamped, enhanced Safe Passage Program, the information's out there, that does include inpatient treatment centers and kind of those additional wraparound services that will look to bring that opioid settlement money to good use. So you'll start seeing more information come out about that enhanced program with the Safe Passage Program. So really encouraged and excited about those opportunities that presents for us.
Would you, could you have, can we get something on, so I saw this pamphlet in my inbox, and it's, I was like, whoa, what in the world? This is so great, this is so cool. I mean, if you read that pamphlet, it is impressive. And I would love for everybody to have the pamphlet.
You betcha.
And know about this, because that, I mean, it...
We've got it.
You guys see it?
We've got it.
Okay, good, because that is something, to see that you can get help, and they'll take whatever you've got, and they'll destroy it, and you won't, and they'll help you, as in, you know, paraphernalia and drugs and all that good stuff. So it's a great thing, is it not? Deputy Chief?
Sorry, John. He looked right at you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
You bet.
All right, time is 9:55, this meeting's adjourned.
Sorry, love.